Okay, guys, we're gonna call the meeting to order. This is our second day of budget, and on the schedule today is, first off, is human resources.
Good morning, Commissioners, John Morrow, Pennington County Human Resources. Thank you for the time today. I've got some different types of things in our proposed budget for the year. We have the traditional standard items, as you will, with regard to wages, insurance, recruiting, travel, phone, those types of things. But I'm also seeking review and approval for some additional software which would allow us to be more proficient and actually provide better support for our employees and for the citizens of the county, I believe. So under the services and fees and contracts, so employee development and performance management are two key components of our proposed HR budget for 2020. Research continues to demonstrate higher employee performance levels, improved, excuse me, improved employee engagement, as well as reduced turnover when employers commit to provide ongoing training opportunities. Not only specific skills needed for their actual roles and position, but other aspects of work such as collaboration, communication, customer service, stress management, project management, and even certain types of computer software skills. So there's a number of things that are available, if you will. We took a look, actually, at what the Sheriff's Department has been using, and it's called Relias. Relias is a program that's hugely used in the public services sector for public safety and/or healthcare. They also, however, have crossovers into just general government types of operations. So in the packet, and actually, these would have been late additions, so my apologies for that, but in the information you have today, it'll actually show you some of the training plan information, which is the Relias, what they call mandatories. Those are more of the compliance-focused type of training things. But some of the things that would help us really tie back to some of the compliance types of training issues that we'd like to have, so ethics, compliance, defensive driving, coworkers, impaired coworkers, sexual harassment, privacy as far as confidentiality for non-HEPA type of entities. So it's a really comprehensive list of different types of things, including even office ergonomics, fire safety, workplace safety, workplace violence, how to de-escalate irate customers and/or clients, some of those basic skills. That would be what we consider the core classes, if you will, of the Relias program. In addition to that, however, they've actually purchased the Skillsoft library of training, which is a huge advantage should we decide to opt in and make a purchase of the software. The Skillsoft offers management and leadership courses, and you'll see in your packet there as well, a complete list of the different programs. So it should be like a five-and-a-half-page list of different types of programs that are available. So when you look at the total cost to add that, again, it's substantial, I'm not gonna lie, so it's about $23,000, $24,000 annually. That price is actually a discounted price for a six-year contract to actually bring this structure into the county on the admin side. We're not able to partner with the Sheriff's Department because it's actually a separate contract that they have, and they don't have access to the Skillsoft modules. Now, the thing that's interesting and troublesome, if you will, is that the Relias software is available per headcount based on the county. So that $23,800 that we're proposing here to make the purchase is actually for about 380 county employees, they would have complete access to all of the modules that are shown on all of these sheets that I've included to your packet. That would roughly figure out, if you will. So I went through and took a look at some of the training that we normally would do or should be doing on a annual basis. So again, workplace violence, Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, affirmative action or equal opportunity employment, background training, bullying and workplace harassment, for example, Cobra, cultural diversity, defensive driving, disability, and the list goes on and on, different employment law types of things. To bring people in to do that for us would be similar in expense to what this program would actually give us, but this gives us the additional flexibility of assigning the project or the different modules to the employees. They could complete them actually at their workstations and/or have visited, actually, with the emergency management team. They have a number of computers that they have that they were ready to dispose of as excess property. We can actually set those up in the conference room and use those for training modules if the employees don't have access in their immediate work areas. So all told, to use the Skillsoft library to break even, if you will, would require 90 sessions, and again, we have 380 employees that would have access to this, including the department heads. This is something that could be paid off very quickly from a cost perspective and increase savings then to the county because of the accessibility and because you're not losing that person for the entire day for travel to and from the event. And it'd also allow us to actually ensure that these modules and these training pieces are actually being done annually. So what's nice about the system, and Tony Virtio came from the law enforcement side and actually did a presentation for a department head meeting here a few months ago. It wasn't supposed to take as long as it did, it actually took a little over an hour to go through the examples. But what's really nice about this software is that we can develop and create an onboarding plan for every new employee coming into the county, and that's actually part of what Sandy and I have proposed for the upcoming year, anyway. Currently, we have an hour-long orientation, and new employees are basically just set free. Not that the departments aren't helping them through those first few days. What we're proposing, however, is a new onboarding process that would include some of these very same compliance modules for the first two to two-and-a-half days of every new employee coming into the county. So we could actually give them some of the resources, tools, and even specific items from their departments. The other thing that's nice about this software is it allows us to upload training programs that we already have in-house, whether they be individual departments that have certain things that they have to learn very quickly. We can upload this into the system, so again, it's not taking another person's time in the department. We're able to actually deliver that material, monitor the progress, and then have a report of completion after they've done that. There's a dashboard feature of this that allows you visibility. Every supervisor could see all of their employees and progress they've made, the HR department, and then whoever would have that master ability could see those progress reports for every department that's part of this process, uh, program, excuse me. I stand for questions on the training pieces that we're proposing.
Commissioner Santo?
Madam Chair, these training classes, are they something that we are already required to be doing, or is this in addition to what we're, our CE's and all that, that we're already doing with our employees?
Both, actually, so I think that's a great question, Commissioner. Some of these are, again, ongoing compliance, ADA, FMLA, workplace safety, harassment, discrimination. Those are some things that we currently try to do in-house. Most often, we need to bring a vendor in, just try to schedule that. The challenge is, however, that because of our work schedules, it's difficult to get a large enough group that we feel confident that everybody's fully well-versed in the material. So I think we're doing a disservice to our employees as well as to the rest of the county because not everyone is getting the information, and that's on me. I haven't found a way to schedule those to help make sure that it's done. This would allow the flexibility to make sure and then would allow us visibility also to see who's completed it and who hasn't, and then work with those departments to take care of it. So this, again, answers the question, some of it's the compliance things that are necessary, some of it is additional development skills to help our people be better able to serve the clients.
With those training modules, you can't, I guess it's called a blast, where you'd send them out to everybody, the ones that you currently have?
The ones that we currently have, no.
You can't?
We don't have that opportunity, and there's no way for us to monitor completion. It's basically an audience participation type of module that we have. This actually would allow us to upload any specific skills training, though. If there's something, for example, that the Treasurer's Department would want to include or the Equalization Department or whatever, we're able to actually upload those into the system. For example, we could even upload our fall open enrollment presentations, so that could be uploaded into the system as well, once those are developed and built, so that everybody would have access. You know, we schedule a number of different sessions in the fall and October. That said, participation is low, and there's still a lot of questions that we field afterwards because people don't have the information to make decisions on the benefits. We could have all of that material in here as well. So from a convenience perspective, from a compliance perspective, and also from a development perspective for our employees is why I brought this forward.
So when you say participation is low, does that mean that we have a lot of employees that are not compliant with what needs, they need to be compliant with?
I would say that as an entity, it's to our benefit to have better participation. There's no law that mandates right now, our past settlement required us to perform ADA training through last year. Those things were met. However, to ensure that we don't get into that situation again, while it's not mandated, it's highly recommended that we continue those trainings. So that's just one example.
One last question?
Yes, sir.
So what you're telling me, if I'm hearing you correctly, is that we should, if we bring this service on, we should see a reduction in travel among most of the departments?
So for the things that are covered with this, yes, most definitely. There's some certification pieces, and Shannon spoke a bit to it yesterday, where they have to do CE for their educational pieces that are offered by certain professional offices, not us. Those things we wouldn't be able to bring in, but for other skills development training, again, it would be something that would be easily taken care of here on-site. You're not gonna have them traveling out, you're not gonna have the meal expense, travel expense, or other things for any of the different modules that are part of this package.
And you believe that if we have 90 participants a year, it'll offset this in how many years?
That, every year, the 90 participants would offset the cost of this program.
Okay.
So, John, just food for thought. So for me to do online training, and most people know I can't sit very long, you're not gonna get a very good output.
Okay.
But if you have somebody actually running through the scenario or showing me some of these things, I'm gonna get it. So I think maybe some of the participation might be when you're sitting, pretty much it's like, really, it's, so, I don't know, and I have to see the program and see kinda how you, how it works. Like I said, if you make me sit there, I've gotten a potential spend looking at that thing for, and even if I have to do my job, I'm gonna follow through with it, but I'm not really, I'll just tell you guys, it's going in and out right away. But when you're sitting in training and you're, the ladies up there, like when we went to our classes, and we had to participate, you start learning and you start seeing, and you, some people, you have to keep on their attention in between there, and you're gonna get a better result, and you're gonna get a better trained person.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
It does.
So just to be compliant, I have to remember that, what I'm doing once I'm compliant.
Right, no, I agree.
You see what I'm saying?
I do. Now, we do have the ability with this software as well to do large group sessions. We could still actually pull it up on the computer, broadcast it onto the screen. So there's some courses that really require that interactive type of discussion. Those we could still do as groups. The goal here is to make sure we're consistent, we have a good product, we're giving the employees the information that they not only need but desire, if you will, from a development perspective. You'll find in most research today that people are leaving for a couple of reasons. Now, this year's an anomaly. People are leaving now in 2019 because the unemployment rates are so low across the country, and it's very simple for them to get a job, and most people that are leaving right now can expect about a 15% increase in their wage. Part of whatever makes people stay, though, was their commitment of the employer to them and their personal development. Someone said it yesterday, or maybe Tuesday. The goal is to give people the skills and knowledge they need to be successful in their careers, no matter what it is, even if they take that information and knowledge to another employer once they leave, because it helps them be better now, it helps develop a better team, and also helps us provide a better service to our customers.
Right, and that's, that's the key. Education, we're hearing it all the time, people are really educated, but can they apply it? That's why I'm saying, you use Relias, and we're well-educated in Pennington County, we've got, we're compliant, well, we're doing great, but are we applying it? And do we know how to apply it just because we went through the, whatever, the education on it? That's where I'm seeing more and more in the workforce, not just what you're talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
So any way we can do the both, so once we have the education, we're showing them how to apply it, or once they've done it, Kevin Carley, I'm gonna use the example, that your 911 people, they're educated, wow, they know all this, and they're, they're all compliant. When they had to go, and, and some of it's gonna be training once you've, you're in there doing it, but examples and showing and actually having the things and the tools that they're gonna use and show them how to use it and make sure they're compliant in that sense and understand it, not just because they read a book and said, yeah, I get it. Okay.
I agree.
Madam Chair. Commissioner, just agree.
John, I think I've used some of this program once before with a former employer, and one of the things I think that, that was required for us in management was to, for continuous education, and so my question is, without really looking through this, I'd sign up on this sheet. I have all this training I need to do in a certain amount of time.
Right.
Then I'd get an email in the morning saying, you got-
Reminder.
-in this dates to get these done.
Yes, sir.
And so my schedule at that time was different than most people's. You work at three in the morning.
Sure.
So you, you do your, your work online and it gets sent out, and some of the good things about what, with that program, because we have a lot of people at the computers, was also there was reviews. I would be able to give reviews to my supervisor on their, our management, upper management also, and they'd do vice versa. So I mean, it was, it was kind of a neat thing, and you could also get into that program and see where you're at with your training and keep track of it. Granted, you need both, you need personal and some of the, the computer one, so I do agree with Ms. Hancock on that, but some of the stuff's pretty basic, as you said, but you could add it and make it for each department that helps them out.
A little bit more hands-on, yes.
So I thank you for that, sir. The department heads, and many of them after the demonstration, expressed interest in this for various aspects of the different programs that are available. What you'll see that the HR department is, is working towards is more of an interactive, participatory, communicative type of relationship between supervisors and employees, and the next piece is on performance management, you'll hear more about that. Our goal is not only just to sign, but talk to them then about what their learnings were. It's not just, okay, we'll just check the box, make them do the program. How do we follow up to make sure they've gotten something from the program? We can build assessments and put them into the program as well, or into this body of software. It allows us to do that, so we can actually develop different skills tests or knowledge tests to make sure they've actually gone through, and that's what the Sheriff's Department has done in several of these as well, which is really nice.
Have you talked to the department heads and what?
Yes, they're actually, so, for example, I was with Shannon again yesterday about this, I had spoken with Mr. Carley when we first did the demonstration, there's an interest in some of these with the other departments as well, so with PJ and the planning department. Those are some that are top of mind because those are more recent conversations, but they all saw value in this. Again, keep in mind, this does not replace the CE things or the certification things that they have to do based upon their individual skills. So in the 911 ESAC, there are certain things they have to do annually and/or as they develop skills on different radio types of systems. This won't replace that. This won't, so those things would still occur. However, the things where sending people to Skillsoft or to other local or and/or peer, spearfish or whatever for additional training seminars, they would actually have that material through this program right here on-site, and the flexibility that it creates, not only the savings from travel, but the flexibility in completion times, like you mentioned, sir, is the same type of thing. There's a huge benefit to us and to the employees.
One of the key things that I thought was neat about the program that I was wondering about, you could, you could sign up on there and you could take additional online classes for upper management. So if a position come out, come open, you would already have that training and you could, it would be marked, you know, in your, on your file that you completed that training before that.
Exactly. We have visibility into who completed what modules, so it gives you an idea as well as far as their progress on different types of things. If you're looking for someone with specific skills and/or who's done these trainings, you can actually use the people that have completed it to help develop and/or give it the program to additional employees because they've already gone through it and have used it.
Maybe I could go with you over-
That'd be great.
The Sheriff's Office, sir.
We could actually have, we could go visit Tony, or we could have him come over here. I would love for you all to see how this works and how they're using it. It's an amazing program.
Maybe we could put that on our agenda to kind of see, update, a briefing on what that looks like and how that trainings process works.
There is, with that software, is a one-time setup charge of $3,500, but the fee that they're proposing is roughly $67 a person for the 380 employees on the admin side that would have access to this program. $67 annually per person is an extremely low price for the cost of all the training that's available, so to kind of give that a perspective.
And it'll kind of tell us who wants to use it and how many times it's been used, and if it's worth keeping up, so.
They, it's part of their annual process, their certifications that they repeat annually, they monitor, they send the reminders, as Commissioner Lecroy mentioned, it's, it's very active and very useful for them as well, so.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Chair.
John, is there, the annual fee's roughly $24,000? Pardon me? The annual?
Oh, so the, the fee that they proposed for me, I've got the actual contract, my notes here are showing that it's less than that, it's actually $21,300 plus the setup fee of $3,500. There is a discount right now, should we actually sign the contract before the end of June, again, no pressure, of $1,000 off of that initial setup fee, so it would be $2,500 instead of $3,500. It's a sale that they have on. It doesn't mean it would have to be implemented this year, but if we signed the contract to begin the program in January, we would still get that discount because we signed the contract in June.
And that's a six-year contract?
Six-year contract. That's, that's the only part that makes me nervous, however, after speaking with the Sheriff's Department, they've already renewed it once and are in the middle of the second piece of this. They've been fully satisfied and really love the program, so I'm-
So is, is that program updated each year? I assume that it-
Yes.
-has to be updated, and is there a cost to do that, or is that part of the contract?
No, it's part of the contract, there's no ongoing or additional fees other than our subscription fee per person, and again, it's the licensed per-county employee that we tell them we want to have access. So for us, right now, 380 would give us a buffer about 18 to 20 people on the admin side, so there's additional hiring that could be done without the contract exceeding that cost for a bit, so.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Chair.
Great questions, thank you, sir.
I was just wondering, how many employees the Sheriff's Department has? I mean, we say $57 or $60 per person.
Yes.
I just wondered on the economy of scale, how that benefits, how many employees use that in the Sheriff's Department?
Right, well, they, from what I understood, speaking with Tony, and again, I don't, I don't have the facts, this is just my recollection, they have all of their employees using this program over there. They currently have about 430 to 440 employees, and they're all part of this process. Now, when I shared with Tony what Relias had offered us for a contract price, it's much better than what their price was, even though they don't have access to the Skillsoft pieces that we do. So again, the Skillsoft is a recent acquisition by Relias. That, again, is mostly leadership, personal development, skills development, so our pricing is actually better than what they had right now. But again, because of the contract process and as a per-headcount, this would still be a separate contract.
Okay, thank you.
You've got great questions, thank you.
So if we add additional modules, that doesn't increase the cost?
No, sir. So as they add additional skill modules, or as we build our own modules into the system and do whatever follow-up, there's no additional cost for that at all.
So what we're looking at as our total first-year expense would be $45,976, I think is what I added in.
Well, that's the total for all of our material, so what I have on their contract, again, is it's $21,289 plus the $3,500 setup fee, less the potential $1,000 discount on that. So roughly, again, looking at what we're doing, or it would be right around 24 total, yes.
But then add in the annual membership of $14,000?
No, sir, not for this. That would be the annual fee then, moving forward, is be that roughly 20-
Well, that includes the first annual fee.
Yeah, so your $3,500 would be addition on the front side, and you don't have that after that first year.
Okay.
It's just to set up the programs for us to use.
Okay.
Oh, good question, thank you. It's, it's an amazing program, and initially, when we, we looked at this, it's like, okay, it's healthcare and law enforcement, but once we actually spoke with them and spoke with Tony to get a better understanding of the program, it's much broader than that, and especially since they brought in the Skillsoft training. It's a package that I couldn't replicate with any other vendor at this point. Any other questions on that piece?
Not on that piece.
Okay, thank you. The next thing you'll see is actually, you would have just received it this morning, and it's the one that looks something like this, it's called Perform, and this is to help, again, with compliance and/or to develop that relationship and ongoing discussions with employees on things that we need, things that they have questions about. This is really around performance management. It's much more than just an annual performance evaluation, and even with that, we struggle in many parts of the county to have a consistent process where those evals are actually being done annually. Some that have been doing them, some haven't on a consistent basis, some don't actually have a discussion with the employee other than to give them the checkbox of, okay, yep, they did this, this, and this, they hand it over and say, okay, thank you. This involves more discussion, more robust interaction between the people. It also gives us access to all that information in a single location. For example, I was working on an investigation recently, there is no record of the performance evaluations for that employee, so we're, we're not fully certain that they have been completed, but there had been one according to the records, but there's no copy of it anywhere. This actually has a central repository, if you will, for all the performance evaluations across the county, and again, it would be something that gives us a consistent process. What's nice about this as well is that you have a way to build the evaluations into the system based upon certain skills that are more broadly based, if you will. So again, customer service, communication, some of those things that you must have to be in a, in a county service position. And then it also lets you identify specific skills related to individual positions that gives you visibility, again, not only from the department perspective, but from the HR's perspective. We could go into the system and look at all of the data for any single person that's in the county employed, again, moving forward, because this, this process doesn't exist right now. This allows the departments to have more frequent touch bases and actually encourages them. It allows them to archive notes from those touch bases, or any performance concerns, or if they're being disciplined for whatever, all of that information can be maintained and archived in this program. So we have instant availability, we are able to answer those questions, we can see trends. We can also look at the information on what skills are maybe lacking to actually build some additional development around those specific skills for the county to help overcome some of those challenges that may exist.
So, John, how much does this program cost? And can IT develop this program without us?
I, we wouldn't be able to replicate this. So what's nice about this, again, is it, it goes through the NeoGov system, which is what we currently use for recruiting across the county. It's actually a component of the NeoGov system. This one would actually run us $14,600 a year, and there's a $5,000 setup fee. The setup fee includes training for all the departments to make sure they understand the program, but you'll see on the four-page brochure that I provided, it gives you information as to what the software actually does for the entity that uses it, as well as the implementation process on the fourth page. It shows you what's entailed in that as well.
And the ongoing costs, is there-
The ongoing would be that 14.6. Now, understand that-
Every year?
Every year. It's just like we pay right now for NeoGov, we have an annual subscription fee to use that for recruiting, the same would be the process with this, there's that ongoing fee.
Is this a six-year contract, too?
There's not a, no, this is a year-to- There's not a, no, this is a year-to-year. Um, what I would say though, just as a word of caution, should we decide to do this, we would have to go into it with the idea that it would be a long-term proposal. There's no benefit in doing it for a year and then losing access to the data that you've gathered.
John, would this, uh, integrate with the Relias? So if you found an employee who was lacking in something, you could go to the Relias and then find out what program or what module would help them come up to speed?
Yes, most definitely. Uh, um, the company I worked for before had a different variety or variation of this type of software. What was nice about that is again, the HR has the visibility to the departments to see, have they done their evaluations? Where are they at? What's the, the challenge? Uh, what kind of data is being gathered and or collected? Uh, it gives us a visibility into the quality of those evaluations. Because again, the goal is not just saying, hey, thanks for another year, is to help them actually understand what they can do to be better and thank them for the things they improved upon. But this would allow us to identify that on a broader base and then, yes, actually look at what Relias offers. So that's why I'm, I'm proposing both of them at the same time, because they would really be able to work together, uh, for the benefit of the company.
What is the, the current method, uh, if we were to use this, what, what, what method would this be replacing?
It would replace the system that we basically don't have.
Okay.
I would, I honestly, I wish I could say in confidence that we do a really good job with evaluations.
Like going paper to digital?
It would definitely be going from paper to digital.
Okay.
Yep, most certainly. Now, you have the ability to print these out as well, so that's something if you need a copy for whatever purpose. Um, but the goal here is to have that data. Make sure it's happening first of all, and to be able to have access to those things moving forward.
So, John, do you build these into your budget?
These are both built into the budget, yes. Yes.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Chair.
John, it would be, um, basically replacing annual evaluations, wouldn't it?
It's a new process for annual evaluations. Yes, sir.
Okay, so in, in other words, we'd have, there'd be ongoing evaluations throughout the year as opposed to once a year?
That's the idea. Uh, honestly, um, what I, and I'll brag about Joe a little bit out in the Highway Department. He has redone the entire process for communication, follow-up evaluations. Uh, it's a very manual process, but it's something that they've all embraced. Uh, he's fairly new in the process. They're doing quarterly evaluations, structured quarterly evaluations for all the Highway Department members. Now, I'm not proposing that we'd go to that, but what I would say is that every month, every couple of months, we at least have a touch base with our employees. Hey, what's going on? What can I help with? And all of those notes could be archived in this. And then at the point, you do have an unemployment pain process, or we're being sued for discrimination, harassment, whatever it may be. Or my perspective is just for personal development of all those employees, you have visibility to what's been done. What are the areas we're lacking in? What are the areas we're really excelling in? And then how do we leverage that across the company?
I think you retain your employees a little bit better when you're, um, checking on them once in a while instead of just thinking they're happy or everything's great. So that evaluation of personal development, I think, is huge and it also shows that you're paying attention.
Oh, most definitely. Uh, again, these would be big changes for us, but they're, I think, overdue.
So between the two of them, just for everybody to know, that's fourteen percent of your budget?
Yes, it's a big chunk.
I ju, I just wanted to make the comment that, uh, now, they can sign in from home under these accounts, right?
Yes. Well, if we give them access, so it's, it's limited to the email address that we actually enter for them.
Okay. Because I, I think that's part of the key part too, is when a person's home relaxing, if there's additional training that they want to do, they're going to do it on their own time to get, you know what I'm saying? I, I think that's one of the key things that, the one that I worked with that you could do is you could do that on your own time, at your own speed.
And bottom line is, is when you're learning that, um, and they complete that class, hopefully their supervisor is paying attention when they're, and then go back and check, like I said, education's great, but if you can't apply it, um, sure looks good on paper, is what I tell people. And that's going to be huge in nine-one-one and areas where, you know, that's, you have people's lives at stake and it's like, okay, she's compliant. Now let's see how she does or he, or he, so, or anything else, emergency management, any, any, any of these things. Because I know, um, watching the firemen and some of their stuff, they have to be compliant. They all, they're doing it on paper, but come on, show us what you do. And we don't just throw you out there and say, okay, you know, now you're compliant, you did all the rules and regs. So, and we want that through, whether it be, uh, Janet's office and auditors or anybody, so they're ready to go and feel like, um, they're educated enough and that they can apply it.
The more information that we give our employees and the better they feel about our investment, if you will, in their development.
Yep.
The better they feel and the longer they'll stay with you as an employer.
Yes, sir.
So, um, I think one of the key things on this one, the Perform, would be that it would keep track of it and you could go in and, and at, begin, on Monday, the beginning of the month, and see whose evaluations need to be done.
Yes, sir.
And you can send it to the department heads.
Right.
And say, you have, we need these. Plus, it's going to get sent out an email. Okay, that's.
Yeah, they'd have that same visibility for their department. I'd have visibility, or Sandy, um, for the entire county then, looking at the, again, not the law enforcement piece right now, the way we're structured, but we'd have visibility to that, could send the reminders, could do the follow-up. If there's additional training needed even on how to have those conversations.
But also, sorry, John.
No, no, they'd go back.
Um, it also protects us on the other side too.
Yes.
So there's a positive and then the other side where, um, we know what's happening and, um, so they also know ahead of time, again, it, for personal development, it's showing, you know, personal responsibility is the bottom line.
From a risk management perspective, it's much better for us to have visibility and access to ensure things are happening. Um, because we can verify and then make sure that they are. Um, in situations where we can't prove that evaluations have been done or that they've been done fairly, uh, it's difficult for us to defend.
Right. And I think that's where a lot of the stirring the pot and all this stuff that goes on the behind the scenes sometimes, that it'd stop a lot of that because, um, you would know this was happening way before as a HR guy and be able to come back and say, no, that's not true. Or, yes, it is. Um, what needs to be done? They've done this training, but maybe this is where we lacked on it. So we can either help that employee or have them understand, you know, bottom line, so.
Madam Chair, one other question.
Yes, sir. Um, no, this is cool. I like it.
That's, it, it's not, well, on the Perform software, because it's an annual renewal, uh, are we going to be possibly subject to an increase in the annual cost as well?
Yep, I would, I would say, that would be my best guess. We look at what's happened with the recruitment piece of that software, NeoGov.
Mm-hmm.
There's been increases. They haven't been substantial from what I remember, uh, but there have been increases on occasion with that software as well on an annual basis.
Okay.
And Holly, Kevin just said he's only going to take five minutes, so John's taking up some of his time.
I know.
Come back at ten. I was joking when I said it, though.
I told them all to come really, really early and.
Yeah. I know. No, I appreciate it. It, it's, it's really helpful. Um, so again, what I'm looking to do and what we want to accomplish is to have, so to oversimplify things and, and please forgive me for this. We have a hundred million dollar business. But we're not treating it in some aspects as a hundred million dollar business. We have a responsibility, not into the citizens, but to our employees to make sure they have all the tools and resources available and that we're doing the things we can to help develop and, um, engage and, and help them understand that we love having them here and we can provide better services, I think, if we're doing many of these things that aren't currently in place.
And John, I think to, um, I know you're, we're over the time, but at one point, we're going to need to know about wages and, and, um, basically workman's comp and group insurance, some of that stuff in a brief.
Yes.
And then I think we're going to have to have some kind of memo or something to go through it again, because Gary wanted to go through some of this and I think we can do it more on a, maybe a special session or Friday.
That'd be great.
If that's okay, John.
Most definitely. I brought information on benefits and wages and work comp. Um, so I have that as well and I, I may have included part of it for you. Um, you have some of that data. You don't have the workers' comp information. I have that. I'll be glad to share that and review the other pieces on Friday.
And one more thing, um, your FTE that you missed on here?
So, yeah, I, I don't have it included, but I, I want to share that we've, we've done some changes, um, in responsibility and or work processes through the county. Um, some of those that have changed were things that used to be done, um, in the auditor's office. So benefits administration, well-marked, stop-loss, annual notices, creditable coverage, billing review, monthly participant audits, uh, summary plan description reviews, a V S division plan, hard-fur and Aflac audits and updates, retirement system program, uh, for SDRS, compensation tracking and reviews, compensation notices, annual performance and longevity. Those are additional duties that we've transferred in to our department that used to be part of a different department. The additional things that we're trying to build, again, departmental training and development, we've started that with three departments so far, uh, and we're expanding upon that. We're still working on new county policies. Uh, we do want to add the Relias and the Skillsoft training as well as performance management software to help us develop and deliver more comprehensive orientation and onboarding, to have a better, consistent compliance training process, develop and deliver skills and personal development training and consistent performance management process. So I didn't include it, um, in my budget. Uh, it's kind of like, can I make it? Um, honestly, we're kind of stretched at this point, uh, and there's some things that are maybe not being done as quickly or, uh, as they should or could be. Um, so I, I would respectfully ask that we consider an FTE for the HR department. I, I think there would be benefit in adding that and then the more we can bring consistency to the HR processes across the company, I think would benefit the entire county as well as give us some efficiencies as well, so.
And, uh, at this point, just because they added duties, and, um, I'd like to see who was doing those duties before and if it was taking one person or half a person, or not half a person, but half-time, meaning, um, maybe we need a part-time, maybe full-time, um, because you have, what, seven, we have seven hundred employees?
Eight hundred and six right now, I think.
So you understand we have an HR of two. Um, we're as big as the city for employees in a sense. And, uh, how many people they got, Holly, or John?
I think you had eight or nine right now.
Yeah. Now, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying in order for us to, um, and I believe in John, I'll just say that right now, from the policies and procedures that he has brought forth have changed immensely. I know some of, um, changed for some of our department heads and, and our workers in some senses, like, really, um, we all do that with change? And then once you get used to it, you're like, it's very process and procedure, um, which works good. Um, they know where we're coming from, where we're going and what's next instead of guessing. And John, you've made that and I've heard it through many employees and department heads, uh, change sucks.
I was just hoping most of it's positive, but I know there's some feelings of like, oh, gosh.
So, but that's what they say. And then once they start seeing, once you get into it, and I know that from anything, um, then once you start implementing it and you see, you're like, wow, uh, this is making a difference. Because, uh, right away, it's like, is this more work?
Right. And I think initially it feels that way. Uh, once you are able to put those processes in place, the change is what's disruptive. Generally speaking though, I'm not going to spend any money or propose anything that's not what I believe to provide value. Um, we turned back almost thirteen percent of our budget last year. I think we're going to be able to turn back between five and six percent of our budget this year. Just because some of those things didn't occur and won't occur and some of the travel things that we had proposed, we can do without. We found alternate methods to get that information. Um, so even with the things that you're seeing in my budget for next year, uh, if there's a way to, again, reduce those, I'm, I'm all in. I, I will say that there's on my, um, line items, there is seven thousand dollars that right off the bat, we could actually remove. Um, so I'll, I'll do that adjustment for you, but, um.
John, you might want to leave it in until we decide on what, what you're, yeah.
So, before I have to remove it, yeah.
Let's, let's see where the commission's going.
Good idea. Honestly, I, I've got seven times.
John reduced his pay by ten thousand? Is that what you said?
Yep, that'd be good.
I'm teasing you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay.
Any additional questions?
Uh, Madam Chair.
Ms. Chair.
John, I think it would be helpful, you know, for the new commissioners, me, uh, if, when you come up with a request like that, Cindy told us yesterday that, you know, there used to be five hundred employees, now there's eight hundred.
Right.
And when you go from five hundred to three hundred, you get, you got to start looking at newer technology to keep track of that, in my opinion. So
Most definitely.
It would help to see a trend, like this is where Pittenning County employment was in, uh, fifteen years ago and watch that because as that grows, we're going to have to rely on new technology to keep track of that.
Yes, sir. Uh, it, because of the complication that numbers create, you have to have a better process. It can't be the old pen and paper because it, it doesn't work, um, for them, at that size of a group. So we're working towards that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Kevin, your five-minute speech. Just kidding. It's like, leave me alone, Deb.
Good morning, Kevin Carley.
Good morning, sir.
County nine-one-one. I had a full half-hour plan, so.
That was great. We really like your budget.
So, uh, our budget that we have this year that we've prepared for you is, um, pretty responsible. I think we, we are requesting two additional FTS, but we've already got a sustainable outside funding source for that as we indicated in our letter. Um, Department of Public Safety originally had committed to one and then ended up committing to three. So, um, we're, uh, that's a, a sustainable amount of money through contract. So we're asking for the authority to, to hire those additional FTS. Before we get into that, I, I don't get a lot of time with you guys, so I thought I'd spend a little bit of time just updating you on what we're, what we're doing over at the nine-one-one center. Very, very quickly, um, we transitioned to, um, a more efficient work schedule in twenty-eighteen. For years, it was a three shifts, eight hours rotating. And in, in an effort to accommodate as many employees as we can, we have, still have the three eight-hour shifts. We also have two rotating twelve-hour shifts because we have some employees that prefer the twelve-hour shifts. They like the three and a half days off. And then we were also able in twenty-eighteen to do some permanent shifts where the senior employees can bid shifts. So they don't have to rotate shifts, which is a good reward to them, I think. Um, it's, it's a good way to reward those employees that have been dedicated in the state here. So it makes for a complicated schedule, but we're accommodating more employees than we've ever accommodated before, uh, with our schedule, so. Um, and the way we did that is we, we sent out a survey in the fall of twenty-seventeen, asked for feedback from the employees and what they wanted. We put a work group together of employees and figured out a way to make that work. And we plan to do that every fall, uh, when we, and review our schedule on an annual basis to try to keep it current, make it the best we can.
Kevin, you guys, um, does Rapid City, you guys have, um, other funding sources? You team with Rapid City or, I can't, I, I'm sorry, I can't remember your department works, so you do the surrounding areas for nine-one-one?
Right. Yeah, right. So where our, our budget works is we, we receive nine-one-one fees from the state. And we also have con, in, income from contracts for services that we apply, that, that we provide to agencies. And then what's left after we've done with that revenue is to split two-thirds and a third between the city and the county. The city pays two-thirds, the county pays a third of that remaining amount.
Yes, sir. Just so, um, for Ron and Gary.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm on.
Watches this, so they know where that funding sources are coming from, sir.
Yeah, I'm going to just hit a few things and I'm going to actually turn it over to Ted here in a little bit because he's a numbers guy. He can articulate that a lot better than I can, so. Um, but just a couple of things I want to talk about. Um, our citizens nine-to-one academy, we're, we're approaching about a hundred people that we've educated that. We do six people a month. We've been doing that for about a year and a half now. And we've also had people from not only citizens, but people from other, other departments in the county come through. So it's a great way to educate, uh, people for us, the community. Our social media footprint, we've, uh, we increased our likes by fifty percent in the last year and we've increased our followers by fifty-seven percent. Again, we use that for education in the community and we also use it for recruiting. That's been a good, a good tool for that. Um, the backup center, of course, you guys know we brought that up on, online in October. It's working just like we'd planned for it to work. We use it occasionally. We train our employees there. And we literally can have the thing up and running in minutes. It takes more time to drive there across town to get there than it does to get it up or running, so that's been very successful for us. Um, and finally, one of the things that we're, we're very proud of over there is when I began as a director in February of twenty-sixteen, the turnover rate was at thirty percent. And since the beginning of twenty-eighteen, we're holding pretty steady at six percent. And the national average right now for a center our size is anywhere from eighteen to twenty-five percent. So, um, obviously, there's a lot of things that, that have gone into that. It's not just one particular thing, but um, we're very proud of that. And, uh, it's because of the support we've gotten from you through wages and benefits and our commitment to training and better scheduling and investing in our people. And there's a lot of different things, I think, that apply to that. We're very proud of that, so.
Kevin, it starts at the top with you and Ted and. Kevin, it starts at the top with you and Ted, and how you're running your department. You already know, if you're not liking who you work for, there's a lot of complaints, without sounding too rude about that, but it's the truth. And if you keep people well-trained and you care about them like you guys do, you keep those people. So, sir, you, since you've been here, I'm going to say a few things, and since we first brought you here, same, when we've just recruited many people for department heads that we've changed out, and the last ones, it's not that they weren't just as good, but that new blood for you, John, and some other employees that we have switched for department heads, just bring that new change, that makes a whole lot of difference of what's next, and how do we keep that performance up and caring about people, so it's huge. So, I appreciate it. You've come a long way, and every year, your FTEs are funded, seems like, if we have to put a little bit in. You're running your department efficiently and effectively, Kevin, so, and I mean that because I watch you.
Thank you for that.
I call your people, and you need to train me how to stay calm. They're like, is this Hancock? Holy crap, guys. I don't know how you stay calm, because I'm like, there's a guy there, and you guys called me? So, I need that training to go, okay, Ted, this is Deb. Anyway, I don't know how you do it, and I don't know how they keep so calm, but it's pretty cool how they try to keep you calm on the phone. But I'd like to watch how you guys do that sometimes, just because it's pretty awesome. Sorry, Commissioner LaCroy.
Ted, I just wanted to make the comment that that scheduling that you just mentioned is outstanding, because I remember when I first met you, when you came in, and I've talked to some of the employees, and some don't like 12-hour shifts, some what they hates, but I really like the way you can form that to where the seniority people can get the stationary ones, and you get the wide variety. I think that makes a big difference in your turnover, because you're working with and you're hearing what they're saying, and you're working with them, and I think that's the key part, and I got that for me when I first met you, and I think I'm glad that you're working it that way. I think that's outstanding, one of the biggest things.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Ted, who will very quickly walk you through our presentation.
Thank you. Ted, I didn't mean it.
Ted, you've been with us a long time. Do you want me to give my speech for you?
Almost 30 years.
Ted, you're awesome.
This is our administrative assistant, Nikki Frost. She's handing out, I've got a simple handout here for you, and I also want to mention, Commissioner Adcock, Stephanie Olson's our deputy director of operations, so we don't want to leave her out. She's a critical part of the team, too.
And thank you, Stephanie. Your whole team is amazing in what you guys do, but you still have to train me, Stephanie, you are, you know, you might have my personality. I remember talking to you.
You should come through our Citizens Academy sometime. It is a lot of fun.
You sure you want me in there?
Yes, absolutely. We'd love to have you. Might make our instructor a little nervous, but that's.
So moved.
Lloyd might help me up here when I'm with Lloyd, going Lloyd!
So, I'm going to try and.
I love Lloyd, I'll be nice.
I'm going to try and help get back on track a little bit. I know Holly's watching the clock, so. You've got our budget, and just real quick, our budget was prepared with the guidelines that everybody else used, so I know you folks will be taking a tough look at the wages and whatnot, and how we're going to do that. So, I'm going to skip that. Our budget's pretty straightforward, as if you look, this is, I gave you this handout today, because this is how, this is kind of the simplest way to look at our budget. This is what we give to our users board when we're making budget presentation to them. So, it just shows you the 2018 actual, and then this year's, and then what we're requesting next year. And in our letter that we sent you a week ago, I just wanted, I know we had some new commissioners, Commissioner Roskinick and Drew, and Drew's, and sometimes our budget can be a little bit difficult to understand how it's funded, and so, you know, at the top of the handout are the actual wage and operation line items, and then below that, it shows how we break our budget down. So, each year, when we start preparing the budget, we look at how much surcharge we anticipate to get. And by the way, that's money that's collected from citizens here in Pennington County on their phone bills. That's the dollar 25. It does go to the state, but then we get 87 and a half cents of that back. So, that 1.265 million, that is what we're projecting we'll receive back from the state in surcharge. And then, we just work down the line there. DPS is Department of Public Safety. That was something we started doing. That's a contract where they closed their dispatch center that was here in Rapid City for many years, and contracted with us to provide that service. So, that's the Highway Patrol, game fishing parks, dispatch, so we do that for them now in a contract. And I'll talk about the new FTE money there in a second. We also provide the same service to Jackson County, Box Silver Police Department, Badlands National Park, Piedmont Fire and Ambulance. They pay us because we don't get any surcharge out of the Piedmont area, so they pay us a fee, a use fee, essentially. Buildings and grounds, so we've, they were paying Western Communications a fee for a radio system, and they asked us if we could provide them a radio system, and so we did. So, we've just stood that up. That'll save them having to pay that fee and a lot of problems they were having with it. It'll actually give them a lot better system, better coverage. Our radio techs designed that, built it, and deployed it, so. But we said, you know, in return for that, since our primary focus is public safety, we needed a little bit of revenue support from them, because we'll be repairing their radios and taking care of that, so I don't know exactly what they were paying Western Communications, but I can assure you, it's a lot more than what we're going to charge them.
Ted, how do you come up with that number by that amount you just said per call?
We just, well, for buildings and grounds.
For any of these, when you're thinking?
The other agencies are more of a, we look at how much percentage they use our services, and then they pay that, that percentage amount of our total budget.
Okay, thank you.
Alarm monitoring, that's been going down a little bit over the years, but that's mainly just public buildings now, and most of that revenue comes from the school district. Fire alarm monitoring of all the schools. The Verizon deal did not, has not worked out yet. We anticipated about 30,000 a year in revenue, but they proved to be very difficult to work with and get a co-location agreement, so that may come back, but we've had to take that out for now, and we're not currently engaged with them on that particular agreement. And then, at the bottom, like Kevin was saying a minute ago, after we take all the other revenue in, then whatever amount is left is what we split, one-third county, two-third city. And we've looked at statistics over the years to make sure that number is good, and it is. It's always been, you know, you look at the total amount of work we do for all the city agencies and the county, and that one-third, two-third split is, it's split, which was kind of just a guess way back in the early 90s. It's always proven to be very accurate. So, I'll stop there for just a minute to see if anybody has any questions on our revenue or how our budget is funded, and then I'll go on to these three items real quick.
I only have one question, Ted, on revenue. I see with the FTEs, the increase in revenue due to the FTEs, but there's a decrease with Rapid City and a decrease with Pennington County. Why is there a decrease with Rapid City?
There's not a decrease, Commissioner. The city and county share is actually going up slightly, 4.48% total.
On the page that says 911 dispatch revenue for additionally FTEs?
Oh, that, that page there is intended to show that, and I assume, Commissioner, you're looking at this page right here? This is out of the auditor's budget?
Yeah, that's right.
So, I think the reason that is, is because for those FTEs, the city and county aren't paying anything for that. That's 100% funded by Department of Public Safety.
Okay. But why would they have a decrease? Because we're not getting rid of anybody that they're paying for?
Well, it's just, I think it's the way the benefits and roll-up shake out. I mean, it's, the total, you know, the FTE cost, we're basing it on $60,000 per FTE as approximation.
Okay.
So, DPS, you know, we're still adding them into the budget, calculating benefits, so there is some impact, but, you know, I think DPS might be paying a little bit more. The employees may cost like 57,000 or 58,000, and we're getting 60, so that reduces a little bit on the wages and benefits.
All right.
That's how that falls out.
Good enough.
Okay, if there's no other questions, then, on just the overall budget amount and revenue, I just wanted to talk about the three areas real quick that we wanted to bring to your attention. And again, we've talked about them. We asked department, when we started the DPS contract, we thought that five FTEs would be sufficient. Over two and a half years of watching that, studying it, we were able to determine and convince DPS that it took more than five people to do what we're doing for them, and we asked them to fund three additional. So, in 2018, they went ahead and funded one of them right away. They said, we absolutely agree, and we can do it. And then, this year, in the legislative session, we were pleased to hear that DPS went to the governor, and the governor said, we need to put the money in for all of them. So, that was put in, and the legislature approved it. So, actually, starting this July, we will start receiving that increase. Now, we will have to amend the agreement with them, because any change like that, and so we'll be coming to you to sign that here, probably in a couple of months. But, so the legislature approved $180,000 increase for their fiscal year, which starts this July. So, we've plugged it into our 2020 budget, but we'll actually start receiving those funds this July. And so, there's no impact to the city or county for that. And so, really, all we need for the county to do is authorize the two additional FTEs for next year, and then we've got the funding for that.
Okay.
If there's no questions on that, the next thing we are asking for in 2020 is a new position within the dispatch center. This, the type of dispatch center we're running here is very unique, and it's very complex, and if you look around the country at most of the dispatch centers, they're what I call a single discipline or a single agency operation. They're doing one discipline for one agency. So, it's a police dispatch center, or a fire dispatch center, or a highway patrol dispatch center. What we have here, and what we started in 93, is a combined regional 911 dispatch center. So, we, and Rapid City used to have a separate fire dispatch, and a separate police dispatch, separate sheriff, separate highway patrol. We've brought them all together now over the years for efficiencies. You know, you couldn't operate four separate dispatch centers here for $4 million a year. But when you bring it all together through the scale of efficiencies, you can do that. And what this position is, we actually planned for this during the last wage study that the county did. We knew the highway patrol dispatch center was coming. Within our center, there's really four separate centers. There's a fire medical dispatch function, there's the highway patrol function, and then there's the police function and the sheriff's function. Our dispatchers, they get trained, cross-trained, and qualified to work in each of those centers. As they do, they're reclassified, because it's really like learning four separate jobs. So, when we have a dispatcher who is able to work every position in our center, they're really able to do four, dispatching for fire medical, completely different than dispatching for police, and even though law enforcement has a lot of similarities, dispatching for the police department is very different from sheriff's office, very different from highway patrol. So, we knew the highway patrol contract was coming, so in the last wage study, we actually left our grade 16 on the pay scale open with plans to make that dispatcher four. That's somebody who is, can do everything in our center, and we currently have 17 employees who qualify for that, but we don't have a way to move them up and pay them for that. And so, that's what this would be. It's that dispatcher four, that's your super employee, they're cross-trained on everything, they know all the skills, they can work every position, and we need that, I think, for morale and for career progression. And the way we had planned to implement that next year, rather than just reclassifying them people on January 1, we would do it on their anniversary date to lessen the cost to the impact. So, for $40,000 in 2020, we can implement that new position, and I think it just gives Kevin and Steph another tool for recruitment, advancement, better service to the public.
Did you talk to John about how you're implementing this, and if it's a good idea about just calling it as?
We visit quite a bit on different positions.
If you want to come up, John?
Yeah, sorry.
Well, because we're, with a separate HR one place, and a separate, you know, in our HR, for me, sometimes it's hard to go, okay, are we doing, are we treating both sides the same?
Right.
And if we're doing it for one side, should we just implement it and do it for the other side? And sometimes that gets confusing, so.
I agree. So, again, John, well, Pennington County Human Resources, there's definitely advantages to having a single HR voice, if you will. In this case, though, I visit with these folks a lot on different personnel issues, on policies, on pay issues, and this, from a progression perspective, is one of those things that we've got people fully qualified, but they're not being fully paid for that knowledge and skill. We lack, in a county environment, we lack the ability to have any kind of career progression. Anytime that we can implement something like that at a minimal cost, I would say it's only 40,000 for 17 people. This is something I would definitely recommend. And I want to add, we're not trying to circumvent the process. This is for the funds to do this next year. We would still bring that job description to the compensation committee and go through the normal process, but we needed to get it plugged into the budget if it was to be approved.
This is, this is not more, what are you doing? This is more, what do we need to do? Does that make sense, Ted?
Absolutely.
So, why I'm saying that is, we have highway in different areas, not just yours. That's why I'm bringing this light, not because it's, you're doing something, anything wrong. But, John, you understand what I'm saying. We talked about this, because once you hit that certain level, and you don't get any steps anymore, all you get is COLA. So, or, in your case, you've raised you as high as, you know, we've trained you where you've hit everybody, so we need to have something, not only for this department, but for others, to give incentive to keep wanting to stay with Pennington County, because those career, or those people that have been with us many years, if we, if they're good employees, we don't want them to retire. We want to keep them, or that are really good, so they don't go somewhere else and think that, you know, grass is greener on the other side when we're the one that wants to retain them.
I think we have a unique advantage this year in revealing this position, as well as others, because we're doing that compensation review later this year. That's going to give us the ability to look at all of these positions that we currently have, as well as proposed positions, cost them, price them, get them into the right categories. It'll be much simpler than, as well, to make sure there's some parity, if you will, or equality between departments and between other areas of the county. I wholeheartedly support this, but I believe that, again, we will be able to address that later this year.
And food for thought, is stepping the way to do it? Is COLA the way to do it? We've done it that way a long time, and remember, we just talked about this.
Right.
We have a lot of different specialized areas where some of this stuff just, it's not going to work, and we just keep using the same system. So, John and Ted, thank you for, you know, how you guys are moving forward, but we need to think about that. For the county, for the future, and Ron just said it, we have 800 employees, we don't have five anymore.
Right.
The future's changing on how you do compensation, and if there's anything that could make it equalize, and maybe there's not, so everybody feels like they're on the same page, and that over there is a lot different than how I do it, and I like to go over there, because they seem to do it better on that side or this side. There's got to be some kind of balance, so anything that we could do to work with the sheriff's office and their HR, and kind of balance it out on both sides would be well-appreciated.
I appreciate that as well. Thank you. I think, again, having the firm come in this year to do that for us, there is a great satisfaction with that firm, with other county entities that have used them. I'm fully confident, again, that they'll propose something to us, or give us options that will help us address that.
So, they're doing all 800 employees in Pennington County, not just our side, or that kind of thing?
It's the complete county, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Sorry to move that past there. I just, sometimes when you sit here long enough, and you already know with these budgets, and it's compensation stuff, pretty soon, it's like, we just did that, now we just changed it, and I'll tell you straight up, it's hard to keep up with it.
I fully understand.
But thank you for what you do, Ted, and I'm not against this, I just wanted to make a.
No, you're absolutely right, and I appreciate you. I mean, that, I think it's something that we do, we work with John a lot, and it's, we're trying to improve the process every time we make a change like this.
We're trying to treat our employees right that have been here a long time, and make sure they feel like that one year seems to be just getting the same thing in their four year, and I've been here 20 years, and look what I've contributed. I want to feel like I, you know, made a difference.
Right.
And sometimes that compensation shows that.
And that really is what this...
This is about.
This is main, that's what this is.
Sorry, got on my soapbox skin. Okay.
And real quick, then, the last thing is, this is something we briefed our users board on, and we wanted to make you aware of it, in case we do have to come back for a supplement at some point. This year, we projected that a large cost of our nine-one-one network would go away in twenty nineteen, uh, about eighty thousand a year. The state project that would have relieved us of those costs got caught up in a little bit of a delay. There's, we're working through that right now. So we are still paying those costs this year. Uh, so we may be back at the end of twenty nineteen, uh, looking for a supplement. However, the supplement would come out of our, we have a reserve fund, the nine-one-one reserve fund, would not be general fund dollars. But we probably are going to be able to offset most of that through budget savings. I mean, we usually turn back, uh, money at the end of every year.
Yes, sir.
So we're, we're hoping we won't have to take much out of our reserve fund. The reason I wanted to mention it this year is, there was a possibility, or there still is a, a remote possibility, some of those costs we would still be paying into twenty twenty. We talked to our users board about it. We had initially prepared the budget by putting that eighty thousand back in, but then they said, "Let's, let's take it out, because it should be gone by twenty twenty." And again, in twenty twenty, if, if we ended up paying some of those costs, and at the end of the year we were short, we would, we would come in and ask for a supplement out of our reserve funds. So we're just making you aware of that. Uh, I think there's going to be some movement on that this week or early next week, and then we'll know for sure when those costs to go away, and it should be by the end of the year. We'll have more info for that soon.
Thank you, Ted. Any questions for Ted?
That's all I have for you.
Anybody have any questions on how they set their budget?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Have a good day, sir.
Dustin.
Emergency Management. Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. Hopefully I have these things in the same order that you do. Emergency Management oversees several different individual budgets in the scope of the whole thing. Uh, is the first page you're looking at one zero one zero two eight five? Emergency responses?
Yes, sir.
No.
No.
Two-two-six oh two eight five. Oh, okay. You tell me what you have in front of you, I'll find it, and we'll go from there.
First one, two-two-six zero two eight five.
All right, that's our big budget, yep. All right, uh, so this is our, our, uh, our emergency management budget, this is what runs our office. Uh, similar to, uh, I, I guess I, not totally alike, but similar to ESEC, uh, there's a somewhat complex funding or revenue stream for, uh, this particular budget. We get, um, some money from a federal grant that's passed through the state, uh, and then anything that's left over after that grant is split equally between the city and the county, um, is, is the way the funding is supposed to work. There's some, um, peculiarities in that, uh, and, and, uh, I'll try to explain those as we get in, uh, to the revenue side of this. But, uh, that's, that's the way that works. We get a federal grant passed through, uh, and then city and county portions. Um, this, the state has made significant changes to the way they distribute that federal grant, uh, so we are, uh, absorbing some cuts, um, all the way across the board. You'll notice in all of the budgets that I have submitted, uh, there's one that's completely grant-funded, that's a zero growth, uh, has been for years. Every other budget that I'm presenting is actually a, a decreased budget from last year. So, uh, we're, we're absorbing some, some cuts across the board. But I, I think that, that what I presented is, is something that will allow us to, uh, continue the work that we're doing, um, in, for the city and the county. And, uh, like I said, I, I, I think we can make it just fine with what I've presented for this year. The one thing that looks different, uh, you'll see on the revenue side of that, those revenue numbers from the city and the county should be the same. The, the budgeting process, uh, and timeline from when numbers need to be presented, uh, and this is where, where, again, it gets complicated. I have to make an educated guess on what the, uh, grant passed through from the state is going to be, and then I have to split that, that remaining funds between the city and the county. And then the city process and the county process follow different timelines in terms of when they want their original numbers, when they want their budgets presented. So the numbers that I'm presenting to, to the commission, uh, and the, and the, the city council sometimes end up changing because we're getting different grant guidance or budget guidance from both entities. So the mayor may say, "I want X percent cut out of this," and, and the county commission may say, "We want a different percentage cut out of this." Well, when your budget says both are going to be equal, uh, it puts emergency management in a weird place, trying to make all of that balance out at the end. And so what, what's happened over the last few years, and, uh, my thanks go out to, to, uh, Auditor Mueller. Uh, it was great to be able to sit down and look at some of the numbers that I normally can't see in Springbrook, to figure out how this all plays out. Uh, so going back over the last couple of years, two years ago, the county ended up putting more money into emergency management than the city did, even though it's supposed to be equitable. Uh, for twenty twenty, uh, the way we're moving forward and the way the numbers have already been submitted, the city will actually end up putting a little more in than the county does. So it goes back and forth. At the end of the day, uh, because we have a, uh, the way our restricted fund balance works, because, uh, just like the reserve account for nine-one-one, our reserve money doesn't go back to the general fund, it stays in an emergency management fund. Uh, we're able, I'm able to, you know, both the city and the county contribute to that. Any, any of the leftover is basically both city-county money. Uh, so by drawing out of that to make up for any deficiency, not deficiency, but any, any inequity between the city or the county of that year, I know this gets confusing. Uh, end of the day, we can use our restricted fund balance in a subsequent year to make sure that the city and the county are providing equal amounts to emergency management. That, at the end of the day, is what we're trying to do. It's, uh, in the grand scheme of things, both with the city and the county, it's a relatively small budget overall. Um, that doesn't mean it's not important, but what it means is, in the big number scheme of things, it's kind of incumbent upon, uh, myself as Director of Emergency Management to follow up with that year after year, to make sure that equity's there.
So Dustin, um, what do you spend professional service and fees? What, that usually seems your highest amount every year, um, besides your salaries, on that two-two-six zero two eight five? What do you usually use that, that money for?
So all of our warning software and services, all of the, uh, the, the EAS and IPaaS and public warning and employee paging and all that kind of stuff, that's a, an eighteen thousand dollar a year software contract. Uh, all of our other software contracts come through that. The biggest portion of that is my salary and rollups. So my salary isn't included in the, the salary lines up above. Um, technically, I'm an employee of the city, so...
So you put professional services under that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm basically a contracted employee, is, is the, the best way to look at that.
And what is your salary in there?
Um, the sal-, uh, my salary with rollups, uh, with rollups or just my annual salary?
Your annual salary?
Uh, I think is eighty-four.
A month?
Uh, in four thousand a year.
Year, okay.
He wishes.
Eight thousand four hundred, not eighty-four thousand.
I'll take that in the form of a motion.
I'd be calling him up to take me out for dinner a little more often.
Some of the, the most significant part of that, that line that you see year after year after year, and that is, is, uh, my salary.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't, for some reason, I don't know if I never asked you that before or not, because I was like, okay, how did he get a hundred and thirty out of salary, and then that'd be that?
Nope, it, it comes up, uh, uh, and again, yeah, you guys have a, a monumental task in front of you, keeping, uh, this bag of snakes laid out straight, uh, and emergency management has some twists and turns to it, so...
So your salary comes out of there, and then your workman's comp group insurance also comes out of there?
For me, not for the rest of my staff.
Right, so with all those comps, did you still make, with those comps, you make eighty-four thousand a year?
No, so if we did the whole rollup, all of the insurances, my health insurance, my retirement, all of that, I think it's about a hundred and ten thousand.
Okay, that's what I need to know, thank you.
Any questions on that particular budget and the, the crazy revenue that, that supports that?
Oh, sir.
What, uh, what's the next budget you have in front of you?
One zero one zero nine one one.
Okay, that's our operating transfer, and that's the one where the numbers might look a little bit different on your sheet, depending on what you have in front of you.
And you went down, Dustin.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, so the one that you're seeing, are you seeing the hundred and twenty-eight?
Yes.
Eight forty-six? Okay, so originally, that was, uh, one fifty, so the city was going to be one fifty, and the county was going to be one fifty. After I went through, again, that process of making it equitable over the last couple of years, um, the county portion actually drops to, to one twenty-eight eight forty-six for twenty twenty. So, uh, a sixteen and a half percent decrease in what I'm asking for general fund monies from the county for twenty twenty.
Any questions on that? Two-two-six zero two eight eight.
This is that, um, and, and these numbers will probably change next year, just looking at the historical trends. This is the, the, the spending authority budget, uh, that, that covers any homeland security grants that we may successfully apply for in the upcoming year. So, uh, none of this money is guaranteed, and any of this money that would be spent would be one hundred percent grant-funded. So if we are, are successful in a homeland security grant application, um, that revenue gets put into here, uh, and the, the, the spending comes out of here. So this is basically spending authority for any homeland security grants that we may or may not be successful in applying for.
Okay. Any questions?
One.
Yep.
Dustin, what does, uh, one, included in the homeland security, the equipment and vehicles?
Uh, so it's not necessarily vehicle, but we're looking at equipment, uh, capital, anything over five thousand dollars. And so usually with grants, uh, I shouldn't say that. Our philosophy with grants, um, is when we chase a grant, it's for something that we can't normally budget for.
Okay.
And so if it's sub-five thousand dollars, if it's a smaller piece of equipment, theoretically, we should be able to budget for that type of an item.
Okay.
So typically, what we would put in for, uh, for grants are larger ticket items that, that don't fit into the normal budgeting process. Uh, so the, the philosophy behind that large number down there is if we were to, and the other problem with these large numbers is we used to pay for multiple departments, multiple entities, uh, in Pennington County through this single fund. And in, in the last several years, uh, that's gone to basically everybody doing it for themselves. And so that's why I say emergency management, um, is usually, uh, in the, uh, yeah, I shouldn't say usually, it all changes. Some of our big, um, outdoor public warning sirens costs, uh, so there was like a seventy-five thousand dollar equipment, uh, that, that went into upgrading that system. So rather than, than try to budget an additional seventy-five thousand dollars in one year, we were able to suc- successfully do that through Homeland Security.
Okay, that clarifies it a lot. Um, would this also be used, um, in the case that we have, uh, riots and that kind of stuff because of the pipeline? Is that part of Homeland Security?
Very difficult to answer that question. Uh, only because it remains very unclear how much federal assistance in terms of money there would be made available for that type of event. Uh, so the administration is, is, has obviously changed, but if we look back to the DAPL protests in North Dakota, uh, um, money did not come into North Dakota from the federal government for that particular event. Uh, so if, through some mechanism, uh, Homeland Security at a federal level were to make funds available, this could certainly be a budget where that money passes through. The revenue code's already there, uh, that's where those Homeland Security grant dollars come into. Uh, so it could be used in that capacity if Homeland Security were to have a mechanism to, to pass money down to the county or the state.
So what was your mechanism for, to get it in the first place? Wasn't it the same processes, or you already designated it in order to get that money already? Or did they give it to you for basic Homeland Security through those same process through the federal government?
So this Homeland Security grant, as it stands now, has, uh, very specific things that it can be spent on. Now, can we spend it on things that would, can we apply for equipment, uh, that would help us in, in a, a, a large-scale il- illegal riot? Yes, we can, we can purchase, and the sheriff's office has, uh, uh, acquired some equipment that can be used not only in that circumstance, but many other circumstances as well, so...
So they can come to you on some of this grant money? Or when you, what I'm saying on the grant, did you put, um, "We need a truck, and we need a this, and we need a, um, siren." Did you already specify to the federal government that this is what you need, or did they give you this grant specifically for those qualifications that are on that list? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, this is a, a, I, I, I think so. Um, so this process is a very long, drawn-out process from when you apply, from when you actually are approved and, and can move forward with things. Uh, I don't, I, I, I apologize for not knowing, not remembering who sits on that prioritization , uh, committee that we, that we have and bring together. Uh, usually, it's whoever's a representative on the EM Users Board. So every eligible entity can apply for a particular piece of equipment on, on this grant. All those pieces of equipment, or all, not all those pieces, all those grant applications initially go to state Homeland Security. State Homeland Security says, "Yes, this is something we would pay for," or "No, this is something we would not pay for." Everything that they said, then send back to us that says, "Yes, this is something we would pay for," uh, then we, as a county, uh, if we have fifteen successful, not successful, if we have fifteen grant applications that are, that the, the state office of Homeland Security said, "Yes, these, these would be allowable grant costs," we take those fifteen as a county and prioritize them one through fifteen. So we have our number one ranked and our number fifteen ranked. This grant is distributed regionally, so we're in a, what we call Region Four, which is basically western South Dakota. Uh, so we have ten different entities, nine, nine counties and, and Obalasu tribes. So we all come together with our, each county and the tribe have their prioritized list. And we end up with, hey, we think we're going to have X amount of money. So now we do, uh, basically roundtable discussion on how many of these priorities, how many of these projects between all ten entities can we cover?
So in twenty, twenty nineteen, you had a prioritized list for the hundred and seventy-five, or, and then you have, like, you have run for this year, you could show us a kind of example of what that list is, and then, um, for twenty twenty is going to be different.
So I think the great way to look at that, I think I see what you're saying, Deb. Um, Commissioner, I'm sorry. Uh, but if you look on, on that, that comparison, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, so, uh, those numbers, uh, you know, I put in hundred and seventy-five thousand to cover, uh, anything that might come through, but for emergency management, we, we had a total of, of nine thousand dollars is, is what we were approved for.
Okay.
So that's why I said, next year, uh, you know, um, with everybody doing their own thing, uh, this isn't the catch-all anymore. Uh, I could probably drop that hundred and seventy-five to fifty and, and more than cover it. But again, none of this money gets spent if we're not successful in the grant.
Dustin?
Yes.
It's Commissioner Hadcock. Just kidding.
Yes, ma'am. Does that, I'm sorry, does that answer your question, though?
Yes, and I'm sorry, because, um, Ron said something this morning, when he went, walked in, and it reminded me, sorry, squirrel.
What, what do you have in front of you next?
Two-two-seven oh two eight three.
But making funny eyes, Holly.
Uh, LABC, Local Emergency Planning Committee, and again, this is, um, money that is, is passed through the state. It's collected by the state, not from a tax base, but from hazardous materials users fees. So if you are a facility, uh, that produces, stores, transports, or uses hazardous material, uh, there are fees that go along with using, storing, making, transporting that material. Those fees go to the state, and then the state then divides those fees up, uh, between all of the different counties. Uh, this is something that's, that's provided for, uh, in federal legislation. Um, so the Local Emergency Planning Committee, uh, kind of like the, the budget we just talked about, uh, we only spend what, what the state, what, what we get in fees passed through from the state.
Gotcha.
Any other questions for Dustin on any of these budget items?
No.
Anything we missed?
Should have one more budget, the one one zero two eight five.
Yep.
Uh, so there's three things encompassed in this budget, uh, the county's portion to the regional hazmat team that we share with the city, uh, the county's portion to the regional water rescue team that we share with the city, uh, and then the MET warn, the, the flood warning gauges. There's a little bit of change in the flood warning gauges. The, the programmatic increases in that, in that system were not sustainable. Uh, and, and we've had some great discussion with the United States Geological Survey, who's our partner in that. Uh, and, um, moving forward, uh, they're actually going to break out just our gauges and charge us actual costs for just our gauges, which will, uh, which helps us out tremendously. That's, that's a good deal for us. Plus, um, uh, it, it, it's very, very equitable. The, the, the costs that we have are the costs that that system costs to run. Uh, as we've been going through in previous years, uh, what's been happening is, is every USGS gauge in South Dakota gets lumped into one big sum, and then they just percentage it out. Uh, so, you know, if they have overnight costs because they have to go from Rapid City up to Aberdeen, those overnight costs, you know, are significant. Well, none of those costs apply to our local MET warn gauges. Uh, so breaking the MET, they are willing to break our MET warn gauges out of the big state pool. Uh, and that will, that will reflect positively moving forward, and keep those costs accurate and, and reasonable. So that's about the only, the, the, the most significant change there.
So Dustin, on Dakota Water District, are we still paying that, was it fourteen thousand through us? Or did we work?
That is not included in this budget because, well, the West Dakota Water District has, has, uh, taken those gauges back.
That's why I need to know. Thank you. Awesome. Good job.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. Next, we have, um, Register of Deeds. Donna, you feeling better? I didn't think you were gonna make it today.
Madam Chair.
Five minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, Donna.
Okay.
Sorry, Donna.
Thank you, Ms.
Okay, Ms. Donna, everybody ready? Yes.
I'll ever be, I'll double check with Matt for sure, cause I know he's got a group.
Hi, Donna Meyer, Register of Deeds. Um, my budget, um, was set up as directed. How to do the budget this year. Um, my operations amount did not change. The only amount that, the only part that did change is the personnel. To show the, um, as per, directed to do the budget. My revenue, I did drop two thousand dollars because people just aren't getting married as much as they used to. Or coming and gaining their marriage records. So, anyway.
Divorces.
Pardon? That's not my job, man.
They don't have to re-register once they're not, you know what I'm saying?
No, no, this is nice, no.
So when you get married, you register, but when you're?
When you mar- when you get married again, when you sign the marriage license, you are saying that you are free to marry. If you're not, then you up for criminal charges.
You don't know if they're, they don't have something that shows that you're divorced?
Through the court system.
Through the court system.
You get divorced through the court.
Yes.
It's, remember, this is.
But it doesn't register with, I never got divorced, so I'm, I don't know.
No. No. It's the United States, you're supposed to be responsible.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, you're okay.
So any questions on this budget?
Any questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Um, the M and, the Modernization and Preservation Fund. Ron is new, um, Gary's not here, but I just wanted to review what the Modernization and Preservation Fund is, that it's not part of the general fund and to be used by the Register of Deeds only per South Court, Court, that, excuse me, South Court of Certified Law seven dash nine dash twenty-five. The fund was created in twenty twelve because many counties were not backing up their permanent records because of a lack of funds, and any modernization was not occurring also because of a lack of funds. There was a huge concern amongst the Register of Deeds because the Corson County Courthouse had burned down. And statewide, there was flooding or tornado, and tornadoes doing damage to county properties. We were also concerned that outside sources would pass laws that were not in the best interest of the Register of Deeds and the county because we weren't getting modern, doing modernization fast enough. So the Register of, all the South Court of Register of Deeds did a nationwide research as to what the best laws to create a Modernization Preservation Fund and what type of fees should be established. A flat recording fee of thirty dollars was, was presented and passed by the South Court of Legislature for the majority of our recorded and filed documents, which twenty-five dollars of that thirty dollars goes into the County General Fund. Three dollars is placed in a County Register of Deeds M and, M and P Relief Fund. And two dollars shall be remitted to the ROD M and P Relief Fund administered by the South Court Association of County Officials to be deposited on a monthly basis. And only before August thirty-first of each year, the fund will be split back equally to all sixty-six counties less an administrative fee, which may not exceed one percent of the total annual remittance to the fund. The average amount each county has received since the M and P Fund has started is about forty, forty-two hundred dollars per year. So for some of these small counties, that's been a big boon for them. The state law also tells the Register of Deeds as to what may be purchased using the M and P Funds, and we are omitted accordingly. Okay, so we have a list of what we can use the M and P Fund. So, um, on my, let's see. I, so this is completely supported by the money that has been collected in my account, the M and P account. I, the bulk of it, a lot of times what I use it for is the maintenance of my, um, computer system I have up there that we do recordings on. And then I do have been working to, um, make available to the public, um, a website to access to this and also start letting notifications so that the public get notices if there's been, if they want it, that they can get notice if there's been anything recorded against their legal description. So that's what I've been working on for the last, um, couple of years. We're just about, we're, we've got the bulk of it done, we're just about there. And I might, I might repeat myself next year, but this, just this year, I purchased a brand-new, large-format copier, printer, scanner for the plates and the large documents. And the old one was still in good condition, and I transferred that over to the planning and zoning office so that they didn't, so they've got one now also. So when we can, if I can do little things like that for other offices, it's gonna be nice.
And Ms. Donna, you started with Register of Deeds, um, the M and P Fund to help other counties.
Correct.
So, um, you're not giving yourself due credit and, um, listened to what they were needing. So you weren't only for Pennington County, you were for helping all the other counties.
Across the whole state. We were very concerned about the whole state because these are permanent records. And when, and I had a more of a fear because originally I came from North Dakota, and I was with your D's up there also, and in Grand Forks in nineteen ninety-seven, not only did the courthouse burn, but also that your abstract company is your backup company, backup person, and, um, system. And the abstract company burnt in Grand Forks County. And so, I mean, when we started talking about this after Corson County Courthouse burned down, I mean, we were just, we were really pushing it then. We had been working on it, doing research for many years, but that's when we really started pushing it, when Corson County's courthouse burnt down. And we found out how many of them were not backing up any of their stuff on film, so.
So that was started with Donna, um, pushing that forward with many of the counties, you guys, so.
I wasn't, just not me.
Not just you, it takes a team, but you were.
There was a team of us.
Yeah, initializing that. I remember when I was running first, uh, you were, that's the first thing when I met with you, you said, Deb, we're gonna do this awesome thing for records and we're gonna start scanning and, um, I thought it was, it was very innovative, and then you were also, like I said, you weren't about you, uh, your team wasn't. It was about the whole sixty-six counties or sixty-five counties besides us, so.
Yep. It's, it's, it's really cool that we are sixty-six different counties and we are ver- in contact with each other constantly. It's really, it's really cool.
Good. Should've went and talked to the Department of Veterans Affairs in, uh, Washington DC cause they, they lost an entire records building also and have never found or replaced or had anything backed up.
And that has been a big issue for my office too because we record the DD two-fourteens. And to find, the veterans to find those records, what can they use to put in our office so that we can issue them a certified copy?
Yeah.
So it's, it's been a pain.
Really tough.
Commissioner Ross.
Uh, Madam Chair. Donna, it's really been a pleasure, as a small business owner, working with you and your staff. It's, uh, one of the easiest counties I've ever had to work in. And, uh, it's been a true pleasure, so thank you for the professionalism.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And Ms. Audra, that helps you with everything you do, which is.
She's been a big, huge help for me.
She's been, she's been covering Donna. Donna hasn't been feeling well since she got back from her trip, so, um, thank you, Audra, for helping, uh, your team and Ms. Donna through, um, trying to get better.
She's, she's learned well, she, and she follows, she follows what I like to do, she knows what I like, so.
Just topped by the best.
Thank you.
And she's as nice as you, so that's even better. Thank you.
All right.
Donna.
Have a good, have a good one.
You too.
Let's see, who's next? Oh, Mr. Cool.
Oh, Ms. Lori.
I miss, oh, I'll put my glasses back on, Lori. Thank you, Ms. Lori.
Good morning, Comis- Commissioners, IT Director Lori Wager. I guess I'll start with the payroll portion of the budget for IT. The transfers this year for us has went down due to the fact that we're not gonna be getting money from Highway anymore because they have went over to a new software. Hopefully, they'll be going live fully by the beginning of next year. Other than that, on payroll, there's nothing much more that changed except for I followed the procedures and put policies put in place as far as wage increases. My operations lines has increased substantially by two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Um, I had a memo, did everybody have a chance to go over the memo that I included? So the, the big operations would have stayed approximately the same with the exception of I brought in our security, door security system into this. And as by the memo, right now, we're currently on Honeywell still in some of the facilities. After conversation with Mike Cool this morning, I will be able to reduce, um, the two-hundred-and-fifty by a hundred thousand, no, by a hundred-and-fifty thousand. So that will come down. Mike has included in his budget for next year to go ahead and convert over the courthouse. He also has included in his construction the conversion of the public safety building, the jail, and the parking ramp. So the only building that is left that would be still on Honeywell is the administration building, this current building here, which is a hundred thousand dollars. I put this in my budget just as a conversation topic so we could figure out how to handle this. So I'm open for questions.
The only question I've got, Lori, is a lot of times people, and I think you, your department's been used a lot for, could you create this program so we don't have to buy it? But sometimes it ends up costing us more to have you guys. I mean, I, I guess the prime example is like the Highway Department. Finally doing their, getting their own program especially, cause you guys had to do the constant upkeep, which was... I guess I didn't have a question, I just had a statement, didn't I?
So we're, we're working with the various departments, that some of the, um, software that's, they could go and buy something off of a shelf that would support. It's really hard to find software developers and to pay them a wage that would keep them here. Used to be like, when I first started, the long-term software developers were here and were here to stay forever. That isn't the case anymore. Um, it's, it's trending more, they wanna go to the big cities like Minneapolis and Denver and make the big bucks. And so it's really hard to keep people in-house. We have decided that it's better for the county if we went to just, um, supporting small, little mini apps that the sheriff needs created or that DOE needs additional stuff, additional applications, or treasurers might need something specific. But right now, I'm focusing on, um, looking at software for DOE that would work with the Auditor's Department. So that's where we're at with that right now.
Okay, that, that's what I was just, uh, you answered that well. Sometimes it's better just to buy that than, than do it.
Right, in the end, yes.
Okay.
So Ms. Lori, and you're asking for basically two-fifty or with buildings and grounds, but I guess Mike will probably have to come up here with you. It says we're slowly doing it, but then you want two-fifty. So tell me, can we implement it in, uh, the next years? Or does it have to be something that has to do now? I mean, and why, why?
The reasoning why we're going forward with this right now is that Honeywell, um, we, yes, we have a support contract with them in place right now, but our support has been going downhill and downhill. Ever since they found out that we weren't gonna stay with them, the support has just deteriorated. If this building, um, decides to go down, the door security decides to go down, from my understanding, Mike, the closest support person for door security is probably in Sioux Falls, correct?
That, that's correct. Uh, maybe I could expand a little bit more on what was, some of what's happened. Mike Cool, uh, Director of Buildings and Grounds. We lost a, uh, uh, the, the support tech, the main person that, that Honeywell had out here, uh, moved to a, took a job with another company so that they have, uh, lost, uh, they brought on a, a new person in, uh, his primary, primary focus training is in, uh, building HVAC control systems, not security systems. Uh, so our, our security systems, uh, fail. We don't have anybody close by who can respond to them necessarily as.
This is jails and everything.
No, jail, jail is on a different kind of, on a different security system than, than the rest of our buildings. And when, when we're talking security, we're talking access control and camera, uh, video cameras. It, it, this poses problems relative to, there's been some questions about whether we can add additional cameras in this building and stuff, and it comes very pro- problematic, uh, from the same point of, uh, we can't afford, we can't, don't have any more room for adding cameras for licenses on the system, without, uh, uh, renegotiating a contract with them, with a company that we're trying to move away from. Uh, and we also would likely be forced into a major upgrade of their main central control system in order to, to do that. So we'd be putting a lot of money into a system that our intention is to move away from.
So, how long? Just to clarify a little bit, we have converted the camera system over. Um, just within the last month, we've converted. We had, uh, sheriffs, treasurers, and ourselves put out the money to be able to convert our camera servers because they became so, um, inconsistent, we couldn't get recordings and stuff. So that part of the project has been handled. The camera system is over on JCI, we still have a few areas to work on, like this room here, but for the most part, it is over and it should be done by the end of June, so that project is.
So how long have we been thinking about moving away from them? And then, um, maybe for planning ahead that those costs can't go like boom, two-fifty? Does that make sense?
Well, here, here, here is.
So what's the plan moving forward?
Well, he, he, there's, there's an additional, uh, uh, piece to this that hasn't been mentioned yet that, that has probably increased everybody's interest in transitioning as quickly as possible. John Denny in our office is retiring in February of next year. He used to be a Honeywell person working for them. He was our onsite representative for them for our past energy control contracts. And, uh, he came to work for us. He is now, his, uh, retirement, uh, for, for February. He's the guy that everybody is relying to try and, is our stopgap for correcting issues with the Honeywell system where we're not getting the support like we would like to see. That's what's concerned everybody, um, relative to that. That's also changed, uh, forced us to reevaluate how we're handling our HVAC control contracts with his, his leaving so that we're not, we, we have two systems, uh, that we're trying to deal with, um, right now relative to HVAC controls, and somehow I'm gonna have to figure out how to replace, uh, him. And we would rather not be trying to train somebody on two types of control systems. Um, one that you literally, um, Honeywell's not gonna allow us much access to anyway.
Well, some of this stuff you inherited at this point, Mike, so for planning ahead, but, um, so what did, um, Buildings and Grounds, did they initially, that's probably your question, who initially paid for and how did the last system get paid for, um, when we got it? Was it through, um, when we bonded, we just added that to it? I mean, where was, where was those costs coming from before when we did all these systems?
From, from my understanding, it's kinda bounced around between Buildings and Grounds and the Sheriff's Office. And the reason why we got, the IT got involved in it is because we were getting so many help desk tickets on the camera, on having issues with the camera. So we came into it to assist with trying to get, you know, some resolution with this.
And funding came from you as well, is what I'm saying for funding, guys. Where is it initially supposed to come from?
Well, uh, when, when these were installed, uh, when a lot of this, uh, equipment was installed or the, the, when the systems came, uh, to be utilized by the county, it's generally been through construction projects, improvements or something. That's how they've been brought in to incorporate it into our facilities over time.
Right.
There's, there's probably been some upgrades, um, um, relative to, uh, uh, at one time, Honeywell controlled the, uh, jail security system as well. The Sheriff's Department went through and, on their own and, um, re-up, upgraded those things. Some, there was, uh, accumulated building funds were utilized, I believe, for the jail. I believe for the jail transition at that time where that, that's where some of that money came from.
But you built it, Ms. Lori, into your budget this year?
What I did was I built in the portion to get the controllers, the hardware for the doors for the admin building. To get converted over to JCI.
Which is two fifty?
Excuse me?
Which is two fifty?
I have two fifty in, but I'll be reducing that by a hundred and fifty thousand because Mike, as of today, we had a discussion and Mike has the other portion of it covered.
Okay.
So basically it's a hundred thousand dollars that we're discussing now instead of two fifty. We didn't get the quote till the beginning of this week. Um, and as far as in the future, what, what IT is doing is we're putting in our budget, the money. In our reserves every year so that we can cover camera servers and the various types of servers and the licensing when it comes up for the cameras. Will come through, out of our budget because it's licensing for software that's used throughout the entire county.
Thank you.
Then relative to the discussions that have also happened is that anything relative to the, uh, beyond the servers, the. Card readers, uh, everything else will be run through our budget, uh, so.
And then you can start understanding that.
That is the way that we're trying to handle this going forward, so that would be coming. Um, major upgrades and stuff would be something we'd be looking at through capital improvements.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Uh, just one, why are, uh, what's the problem with Honeywell?
Probably not, not, not easy, I mean, uh. Relative, I think that generally in, in, in the county that there's become a real dissatisfaction with Honeywell. In terms of their support that they've been providing, uh, when, when we, when we've needed help, um, they don't, um. They're not there when we need them.
I just thought a brand like Honeywell, you'd have pretty excellent service and I haven't heard.
In the, in the past we have, I, I, I attribute some of the problems that we have is that, uh. There's a, uh, transition in the industry right now relative to this. If you've heard that the, the internet of things where everything is, these, a lot of these old systems now are starting to become run through networks. That, that's the way things are going. Honeywell is almost operating on this old business model now of how they do things and they keep. Everything's proprietary and they keep us out of it where, where everything is much more open on. When you move towards the internet of things and so that's, uh, part of the problem, we believe. They, they still operating under this old model, business model of, of this structured system for, um, of managing these. Systems and it doesn't work very well for people.
So basically new technology.
Yes.
Well, my brother-in-law used to work for him, um, Ron and, and Mike's right. He worked for him twenty-seven years and opened his own company a couple of years ago because their innovation is going downhill. They're staying with old school, uh, technology when technology is moving forward. And he likes to be very innovative, so, um, Mike is right.
They're also backing off on their service centers in low population areas. They're moving to nothing but Seattle and Minneapolis and Denver. Where they have a population density that'll. Provide a larger.
I mean, I, 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 I would say that, you know, there were, um, I think when we were doing, uh, this facility. And, and while this facility was actually going on, they were, they were already beginning these, uh, cutbacks on, on, uh, uh. Taking people out of, they had some of the people that worked on this facility, uh, were, were put into retirement early. So that they could start cutting back on, on, on some of these costs for, uh, uh. Their, their overhead, I guess, I, I would say, where we used to have probably, uh, three to four service technicians, we're down to one. And we are not a priority over the airbase where there's still systems out there, uh, so, um. Uh, that's where we really run into problems and there's not, not the people are available to, to take care of issues.
The JCI, is that a, an acronym for a, a company?
Johnson Control Systems.
Oh, okay.
Um, is what, what it stands for, but.
And we got the, we got the service, uh, locally here?
We, we, um, we implemented it relative to, uh, we went through quite, quite a process relative to. Determining who we wanted to go forward with relative to security, uh, work, working through IT, they, they looked through and the sheriff's office was involved with that. Considering who we wanted to be allowed to bid on the, um, care campus facility.
And highway.
And highway, and highway got, was brought in at the same time. I think we had it down to two that were.
Who were three?
And JCI was the one who, uh, who ultimately had, was selected. Of course, that, once we've made that selection, that's who we're going to continue to expand it into.
Well, and Johnson Control is expanding, so.
Right.
Company that's expanding and innovative and.
Yep.
They're basically pushing. Their competitors.
Out.
Into only the populated areas and.
Yep, and we have very, I think your experience with them so far relative to the security stuff has been excellent there.
Yeah, now that I know what JCI is, I didn't know what the acronym was, but yeah, Johnson Control, it's another well-known brand.
Any other questions for Lori? Thank you, Ms. Lori.
Thank you.
Mike, you might just stand right there. Mister Mike Cool, Buildings and Grounds.
Good morning, Mike Cool, uh, Director of Buildings and Grounds.
Where are we cutting you?
Well, I'll start out is that we've tried not to add any, uh, much to the, to our budget. I will note that generally Buildings and Grounds is the place where people come to and ask us to try and solve. Problems, uh, relative to.
What are you looking at me for?
So we, I, I have not asked for any additional, uh, FTEs at this point. I, I do have, um. I understand the general desire is that we, we minimize those people we need to bring on. I, I will note that we are, um, with completion of the, um. Jail project that we will have more space to take care of, um, in, in the future, uh, as far as administrative areas. Uh, so we do have additional needs coming up. We are, we're trying to, we're, we're trying to figure out how, um. How we can, uh, adjust the way we, we take care of some of these things without asking for. Um, that's our first way of trying to address this is shift, shift the way we do things and see if we can't handle them. That way without asking for additional staff. Other than that, generally we, um. Relative to operations, uh, it, it, it's primarily it's adjusting for, um, um. Inflation, uh, we, right now, I mean, there have been some, there are some in place. We, we are impacted by the, what's happening with the jail, uh, constantly. We pay for all their, a lot of their supplies and everything that go through the jail when that jail is running at a hundred percent capacity all the time. Um, that impacts our, our repairs and maintenances and, um, items and our, uh, supply lines. Uh, relative, relative to that, and generally, uh, you know, so far we're, uh, we're more absorbing that than. Asking for a lot of additional money, but, um, that, that is something going forward in the future as I come to understand. Better how some of this money is getting utilized within our budget, um. Those are I, areas where are concerned to mine and we're having discussions, some discussions with the sheriff's department regarding. How do we address this going forward if the, these numbers are going to continue to climb? Accumulated building, um. Um, I just brought that back up to eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, you know, I viewed that as a, a number. Um, that was established by commit, by the commission, um, I, I, I can't say how long ago that was, maybe four years ago. I, having a, a. Jail, and I think I've known this before in discussions up here in front. Uh, our jail is thirty years old, our energy plant is thirty years old. Um, we have to begin to start replacing some of this equipment that's in it, um, before it crashes. The, I, I did not buy a, a new chiller this last year, um, because I didn't feel like I had enough understanding about, um. How we should approach, um, my senses that we were going to have to replace. Two and we're relatively short amount of time and whether we should be, um, looking at different options. Because we're going to have these for another thirty years once we make this decision. But as we, we went through and had those services this year, we, we learned that they ran into problems with parts that needed to be replaced. That are no longer available. They actually had to go out and find, had to be stripped off of other part. Equipment and so we're, we're on, now we're on a, now we're on the clock in regard to running out of time for. How long we can maintain these, um, chillers.
These are the chillers in the jail?
These are the chillers, these are two, uh, chillers in the, uh, energy plant. We have four chillers overall, two, two of them produce ice during off-peak hours. Uh, two of them run, um, to, to, uh, to, to meet normal cooling needs. And that's supplemented with the ice storage.
Okay, have you, have you ever been down there to see that?
Go check it out.
Yeah.
Run and.
Yeah.
You need to go check out some of that. It's pretty innovative.
I, I have to admit that they keep that spotless and you guys have. The only reason why they're still here after thirty years is because of the great upkeep and what's going on with.
Never thought about that, but that's true. When you go in there, it is spotless in there, not even dusty. That's what, I never thought about that, but if you go in, well, most places, you'll see it looks kind of like it's dirty and. It looks like it's brain new still.
Well, we, I, I, I appreciate the, the sentiments and stuff. I, I think it could be better. We, we certainly, uh, um, can, um. We, we do need to be doing some improvements relative to the equipments, um, swaps. And, and, um, you know, part of by this process for me getting, i- is becoming aware of issues. I mean, I've got chiller lines that run underground over there that, um, there's no way for me to know what kind of condition they are. But we've had other lines that were buried in other parts that, that used to feed the, uh, courthouse that have failed already. So, uh, in, in my, you know, that, that's a terrible place to have those things underground where I have, we have no idea where. What condition they're in, um, so they, I'd like to see those out. We've got a, we've got a wall, one of our walls to the basement that, uh, when you get these huge rainstorms like this, there's been times where. We've had an inch of water standing on the floor in, in the energy plant, um, around electrical. The, the major panels supplying those facilities in, in there, which is kind of scary that. I would like to try and get addressed, but they're not easy problems to address at, um, at, at, at one time. It's, uh, um, we have to find a, a project, you know, like working on maybe these chiller line, um, issues. In, 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 in regard to trying to address these, uh, uh, this wall that, where this water comes in someplace, um. You know, that, that, those are things that we can bring in to piece together a project that, uh, that's, that's worthwhile and. But has to be coordinated well in, at the right time and right season, uh, to make that work.
Mike, do we have a sump down there?
Uh, we do have some pits, uh, uh, that doesn't mean, um, I may have said this before, generally, you know, what, what happens often is the, uh. When we have floor drains or something, the floor drains are the highest place in the floor of any building, uh, when, when they get poured, so. So, I mean, we, we can, we can handle those waters, we can get it run in here. It's just that. It concerns me that, that we, we've never really run into a real serious threat yet. But seeing the water on the floor like that is a scary thing for us relative to, um, if something, if, if, if we have a. A, an, an open wire someplace where a conduit is, is, it has, is, uh. Has begun to rot away or something, um, it's concerning that we, that we can get that kind of water in here. I don't want this to make it that, that this, the sound is this is a dire situation. But it's a scary thing for me relative to seeing that kind of water on the floor of, in the energy plant near electrical equipment and. Now, we, all of our equipment is up on, all of our equipment is up on, uh, pads and stuff that keeps it off the floor, so. It's not threatened by that water, but, um, those are things that I think need to get addressed.
Sure, yeah, one question on the chiller lines is it, would it be possible to, uh, access or rent? Uh, fiber optic camera to run those chiller lines in respect?
Yeah, um, we, uh, uh, explored that option, uh, late last year. They didn't think that there was, we, we were going to actually be able to see anything, um. Through that and, and our experience so far and, um, some of you have been on the building committee have heard my concerns expressed about. The condition of the sewer lines underneath the jail. Some of our concerns came true this year, um, um, we actually had a, one of the pipes, uh, in the kitchen. Did, did find, did rot through and, uh, we were, uh, lost control of that. We actually had to replumb. The, uh, uh, the sinks, we've got everything running to a, a holding tank and so, and then we pump it down into a, a part of the, uh. Into a sewer, add a portion of the sewer line that's still in good condition, so. But when we, when, when we're trying to camera those things and look at them, it, there's not, you know, when we look down. Um, it, there's not really a good way to understand what kind of condition they are until there's something that's blocking them. Or, um, you can see if, if you got tree roots or something that's growing, growing down in them, you can see those things. But generally it's really difficult to know what the condition of the pipes are in.
Okay.
I, I'd say, Mike, I. I appreciate you looking out in the future with this stuff, especially with those cooler lines and, and that stuff because. Usually when those things are going to fail, it's going to fail at the peak time when you need them the most. Chiller lines, it'll be a hundred degrees on, you're going to have a building, you're going to have to take something that takes. Emergency contractors to come in and fix and, and that type, type thing, so having that foresight and realizing that. Hopefully you can come up with a good plan, uh, need capital improvement to. Run them above ground at a later date or something.
My, my, uh, Mike, the reason I want to state those things is because there, there is good reason to have that capital improvement money in place and there is. When, when we have these, this equipment, um, that's this year, that, this old, um. We need to start, uh, planning it and, and right, right now is, is what, what, what I'm working towards is having a plan that, that we can. Uh, of how we begin to, uh, what, what are, how we transition this equipment out and, uh, and. And, and make, uh, the best decisions that we can relative to technology available right now. Going forward, um, to make it as efficient as possible.
Didn't you have a priority plan last year?
We, we, we had, um. Uh, I, 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 we were looking at, um, doing one chiller, uh, last year. I had concerns about, um, whether we were, that was the right chiller and, and understanding the, the condition of it. Um, I worked with an engineer for a little while trying to, um, help us understand whether. That was the right one to change or not, um, I felt in the end. This was before we done, we had done our maintenance on it for the, for this last year, that, um. I didn't have solid enough information that that was the right chiller to replace first.
So Mike, I guess my question is that we got a contingency plan in place if one went out tomorrow?
We, we do not have a, a contingency plan right now. I mean, we, if, if we had a chiller go out right now, what we'd have to do is lease a chiller. Until we could get a new one installed. Getting a new chiller is a long term.
It might be not, it might not be bad to start some kind of a plan, assuming that one did go out tomorrow in case one does go out tomorrow.
Yeah.
And, and the, in the private sector, when I appraise the motel, you know, uh, we know that the furniture's got to, going to last about ten years, so. I don't know how the county does it, but if we had to replace it, do we put a. Certain amount of funds away each year that would cover the capital cost of a.
I, I, I think overall the county is moving in those directions that we are trying to. Uh, figure out sustainable ways to continue to, uh, deal with this upgrade, um. uh, figure out sustainable ways to continue to, uh, deal with this upgrade, um. Um, I, I, I agree completely with you that we need to have these things, uh, uh, some of these ideas in place, um, um, and, and dealing with it. And certainly I, I like the idea of having, uh, you know, wha- what I envision is gonna happen is if, if a chiller, what we, we're gonna have to do is, and, uh, lease a, uh, portable chiller and put it in, in place, uh, located onsite, uh, until we can have it, the new chiller produced that we'll replace it with. I'm hoping that, um, we don't have to do that. The, our, I don't expect that based on the repairs that were made this winter that we're in imminent under an imminent threat from a failure like that. Um, based on that, um, what, what I'm trying to make aware of is that, that the time to have it replaced, we need, we need to be moving to get those replaced.
Say what that means by moving. I mean, what do you wanna do?
I've already, uh, one, I, I, I am having in the capital improvements budget, uh, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars to replace a chiller this next year, so.
Okay. That's what I thought you had built it in, just so they know that you're saying this and that you've moved forward into putting that in your funds.
But generally, otherwise my, I'm committing money to upgrading these control systems, um, because of, uh, between the, the poor service that we are, we feel we're getting right now and the, the, our loss of John going forward that, um, we're, we're trying to minimize, um, any risk there.
Any other questions?
Someday wouldn't mind taking a look at that, uh, facility though.
I, uh, it's a lot easier. I, I know that you, you, you've indicated the interest that I apologize, if, if, when, when it's, uh, a convenient time for you, I, I will run you through.
I'm ready now.
You got a half hour.
I'm going on the.
Come on, Mike, you're not going to lunch for another hour.
Okay, if you, if you'd like to do that, you're welcome.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Thank you, Mike. Lunch, Holly?
Can I kick off the commission budget quick?
Yeah.
Let's do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Ron, when you, uh, figure out a time to do that.
Yeah, let me know. Yeah.
Ms. Holly Hennings.
That's, that's where you'll, you'll get down and see where that beam was, like, it's probably fixed now where that one was right away.
All right, Ms. Holly. Tell us what you got. Tell us what we did to you.
Okay, commissioners. Um, if you look at the first sheet in your budget books, um, which is one-one-o-one-one-one, which is the commission fund, the biggest changes that you will see is in the upper portion of the salaries. Um, this shows the adjustments that were recently done for the two full-time positions in your office. And I wanted to point out for the board that I increased the commissioners' monthly wages to nineteen hundred dollars for twenty twenty. This is based on all the research that was done in comparable counties, um, municipalities, trying to get you guys up to an appropriate midpoint for those comparables, so, um, currently it's at fifteen hundred and thirty-one dollars and I put it in as twenty twenty for nineteen hundred dollars a month, so if there's any additional questions, direction the board would like to give for that, or if that's what you feel is appropriate.
Any questions?
Holly, on, uh, travel and conferences, you have sixteen-two. How'd you come up with that?
Just, um, let me get to the operations section. We're good with salaries?
Yeah.
Okay. Travel, I based on a minimum of three people going to the spring convention in Pier. Three going to the Western Interstate Region, NCO. All six going to the annual convention in Pier in September, and then I think I did two, if not three, to the NACO annual convention, and that next year is in Orlando.
Okay. I, I'm just curious, cause I was trying to shoot, come up with some of these normally, I mean, I think we did pretty good. Um, the commissioners did a pretty good job of keeping it low for our first year this year, and it wasn't budgeted for these conferences.
Correct.
I think, I think we did pretty good. Um, but average, an average conference would probably normally run, are you budgeting like twenty-five-hundred?
Is about what we estimated, yeah, between registration fees, airline, hotel.
Yeah.
You, you init- initiated the challenge of not taking per DMs, so that is some savings there.
Okay. That was for, for this year, but yeah. Okay.
Questions?
Holly, did we stay under what we had anticipated for those, for, well, for the Western one? They haven't left yet, but.
I apologize, Mark. I haven't looked at those numbers or necessarily updated them yet for where you guys were at. I believe you did.
I think we did.
I believe you did, yes.
Good.
Cause I think, I miscalculated. I was thinking that I was under eleven-hundred, but I forgot about the five, there's a five hundred dollar fee for the conference.
Right.
So that, that, that's where I was gonna throw in that.
I think I was at around sixteen.
Maybe Holly bring, bring those back on updated.
You know, in Lloyd's case, we had budgeted for the hotel where he went and found an Airbnb that was half the price.
Right.
So we were able to gain some savings there too, and
Okay.
Looking at different hotel, you guys stayed a block away, um, that had some savings for sure, so.
Yeah, I think it saved sixty-five dollars a day.
Mm-hmm. Nice.
Good. And it was really, if it wasn't for the one flash flood they had, we, it, it wouldn't have been any problem whatsoever.
Just, just a flash flood.
Yeah. I guess the only other thing, you'll see an increase in professional services and fees. Um, that's just with the lawsuits that we've had recently, that we've had to have some payments on, um, that I can never budget a hundred percent for, so there's a slight increase in there. Publishing, we've been running lower recently, so I reduced that budget a bit. The county's, uh, the commission budget pays for all the publishing for the county. Um, liquor licenses, bid notices, minutes, um, all of that runs through the commission office, so quite a chunk of money there. Um, other than that, that's the commission budget in a quick snapshot.
Holly, if that's the case, that we pay for the other departments publishing, um, should we be reducing it in, in an election year?
Reducing in an election?
Well, for publishing, are we?
I will stand corrected. I do not publish elections.
Okay, alright.
Nothing to do with
Okay.
With elections, and I guess I should maybe give a better disclaimer on that. We do not publish the state's attorney's, um, A and N notices for ICWA. We don't publish elections and we don't pay for the planning commission for that kind of stuff, so.
That, that clarifies that. Thank you.
Um, the next budget that you have in there is for the insurance for the county. Um, pretty self-explanatory. I work with Mike Cool a lot, um, auditor's office on liability and property insurance. Um, unemployment claims have been running lower, so I reduce that budget for this upcoming year.
Any questions on that?
Insurance.
Reduced it by thirty-three percent?
Twenty thousand dollars.
Wow, okay.
Can you explain, now we're on contingency budget, how contingency, what we usually use those contingencies for, Holly?
Yep, next sheet in there is your contingency budget. Um, I've included the statute on the top that gives you authority to have it. Basically, it's our little savings account that you can pull from if needed. Um, you can see what we've spent out of contingency back through two thousand twelve. Some years it's used, some years it's not used at all. Um, details have been included down below. Just for example, twenty nineteen, you've done transfer for the Hill City School Liaison, the Waltham School Liaison, membership for Black Hills Council local governments, um, stream gauges, it, it can be used for basically anything that the commission feels is appropriate, that isn't budgeted somewhere else.
And you replenish this to two hundred every year?
Not, I left it at a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Um, we've never spent close to that.
I know we.
We were at two fifty. You are correct, sir.
We did reduce it down, I think, one year and then.
Yeah, the last.
But I was just wondering if we replenished, I think we've come up with two hundred thousand. Now that we've used them, are we gonna replenish that? And you haven't put that in. You're keeping it where it's at with this budget, right?
It's not necessarily replenished, it's just spent down through the course of the year, and then when the new year rolls around, we set the new budget level and back to one sixty-five to start.
Okay.
Any questions? Sorry, sir.
Is the eighty-four sixty-one for Black Hills Council local gov- local government, is that our?
The remaining membership fee for twenty nineteen, correct.
They do some amazing stuff.
Hope so.
Well, they do. Ally came.
For Pennington County, like, the cities and stuff too in Pennington County, so, like Hill City and some of those other areas that need help.
Okay.
So it's not just for like Rapp City area.
Okay, I'll be going to the first meeting next Thursday.
That helps.
And that's, you, you're with the SBA and that group and.
Why in that or is he in that?
It was chair and vice chair.
Yeah, chair and vice.
Okay.
He can go.
He can go. Might wanna put him down, or Ron, you might wanna put down, cause having three commissioners there then, Ms. Holly.
I think.
Yeah.
When, when would it be?
It's next Thursday at noon.
Will I be back?
Yeah, this board selected the chair and the vice chair as the members to sit on that board.
Voting itself.
And is that here?
Yes.
Okay.
We can get you the information.
On Watertown Street.
Yeah, will you, will you send us this and then, um, the agendas, so all the commissioner knows kinda if they have an agenda on there?
Great.
That way they know what they're getting for, and what we're doing in that group, instead of just, uh, review here. Sometimes on email, we kinda keep track of it.
Seven-thirty East Watertown Street, suite one-on-two.
Right on the north side over here, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions?
The commission.
Good.
I had one.
Go ahead.
Holly, do a good job of keeping this updated down the budget. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Holly, liaison for schools?
Yeah, the, uh, liaison for the school for Wall and Hill City, it comes out of that contingency.
For that year.
So with that, I thought maybe it'd come out of the general fund or something like that.
That is general fund. Contingency is general fund money. It's just that the sheriff didn't have it budgeted in his budget. So the commission felt it was appropriate to fund it, and that was the only place that you could take it out of.
And then will it come back to us out of the sheriff's?
Oh, go.
Going forward, he has it in his budget. For twenty twenty, he does.
All right.
But this was a one-time expense out of there to cover, to get started.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Good enough.
All right. Anything else, board? We just go into recess, Holly?
Yep.
Recess for lunch. Lunch.
Good enough.
Lots of food back there.
Um,
I need to make a motion though, please.
Who's to go into recess, second?
Aye.
Fire administration.
Oh, this is treasurer's office.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Annette Brandt, Treasurer's Office. Start with the budget, which was, um, done as according to the auditor's directive. We did put in just a small portion for overtime. We're anticipating additional training that needs to be done. The state South Dakota car system is, um, being upgraded. Actually, they're getting rid of the one that they have now, and so we'll have a whole new computer system to have to train on. We've started that already as of two weeks ago. The state came in. We had several sessions then and will continue until probably January when they make that effective.
Somebody have any questions for Ms. Net? You're done.
The only thing I, I would say is, you, your workman's comp's up there fifty-two percent, and I think some others have went down. Didn't yours go down, Holly?
Work comp? Um,
I, I've kinda seen.
Those amounts were directed by the auditor this year, that, that they had nor- that they had in previous years been figured had been figured incorrectly.
They all did, okay.
Mm-hmm. Um, let's see. We were directed, it's a, it's a point two, point two-nine percent of our wages is what it is, and, um, there was a lower percentage that was used in years past, so.
Well, it's based on cycle and claims, and we're getting ready to drop off one year that was higher and but most went up this year, yes, sir.
It's not specific to, there's been more work comp claims in specifically the treasurer's office. I don't think it's just a percentage.
It's just overall.
If that's.
County-wise.
But it, but it looks like you've got a lot of reductions, like professional services and fees is down ten percent. Travel and conferences is down seventeen.
There, in years past, we've had quite a, quite a bit, um, turn back from the budget, and so we tried to tweak those a little bit to help out with the bottom line for the, for the budget. The professional services and fees did go down a bit. Wells Fargo was, is our service provider for the notices, um, the tax notices and the delinquent notices, and they started providing us with a discount, and so we put that in, in here, and then, um, last month we got noticed that they're no longer gonna be doing the services, so we're hoping that the new service provider is going to match the prices that we had from Wells Fargo and be, so that we can stay strong with the budget that was presented.
I've just seen, seen that, good explanation, thanks.
Our group insurance is, um, up a little bit, and we just got, we've got, um, younger families now that are employed in the office. The, the wage portion of salary is, um, reflective of the new policy that went into effect last year, but also, um, greatly effective in our offices. We've got about five or six employees that have now been there through the whole training process. Takes about a year and a half to two years, and they're ready. Um, they'll be ready for that reclass to go up to the next grade, so we needed to make sure that that money was there for them too.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Net.
Explanatory.
Very solid. Thank you.
Questions on the revenues? That's a shot in the dark. We try, we really try to get that close, but as you all know, just even the one line item on interest can change with just one tweet. So, um, for instance, this year, we estimated a hundred thousand in, um, in interest, and I think we're already at a hundred and eighty-five thousand. So we just never know what that, how that's gonna affect us, and it's a conservative.
Ms. Net, can you tell us about the phone systems, just so we have a heads up, just a brief
Sure.
briefing on that, since, um, we had talked about that, and I think it's important that the commission, uh, knows what's going on with the phone systems.
Sure, we've had increased, um, um, complaints from the public that they feel that their phone calls have been disconnected. Originally, IT felt that it was that the volume of the calls coming in, um, possibly the phone lines, um, weren't enough to handle it. We started looking at it a little bit closer together, us letting them know what the customers were saying, forwarding the emails to IT, um, and their, this phone system is a year and a half old, and it's capable of a lot more than what I think we were having it do. Luke in IT has been, um, working with different routing, poss- or different routing changes for our office, because we do have a huge influx of phone calls that come in all at one time. The county has, I believe, forty-eight phone lines that come into the county right now. And so at first we were looking at a possibility of adding another twenty-four. Each bank has twenty-four banks, or each bank has twenty-four lines in it, but while we were looking at the way that our calls were routed in, But while we were looking at the way that our calls were routed in, um, we see that there might be some changes that we can make to that first. Apparently, they just found today, this morning, um, IT came up and said that they had a report that showed them that only seventy-five percent of the phone lines were being used. So, we know that we're on the right track then with rerouting the calls within our office to hold them a little bit longer. Um, what it's gonna mean is, oh, hi Lori.
I told her to come up and, that way she can.
What it's gonna do, what it's gonna do now is, is hold the calls a little bit longer and then disperse them out to our callers, or excuse me, our staff. That's able to call them what we, why I wanted to make sure that the commission was aware of it with this memo is that that's, that also means when it holds those calls, we have to have a cutoff at some point that calls don't keep coming in there, or we'll be here till midnight answering those phone calls. And four thirty seems to be the happy medium to fill that queue, to be able to empty it out before we close, so.
Any questions for me, Lori, Chief Director?
Any add, anything to add with that, Ms. Lori?
We're just gonna keep working with Treasurers and, and keep monitoring and seeing what's coming in for calls. We found a report finally that tells us how many calls are coming in per hour, so we can reflect that with the Treasurers so that they can make the determination if they wanna change their call, call flow at all during any point in time during the day. So, um, Luke has been working very hard on learning this full system, like Annette said, we've only had it for a year and a half. And, um, we're learning more and more about it every day, so. And the reason why we changed from our old system to the new system is because Avaya was going away, they were going under, so.
Well, and the main reason we brought this forward as well, so you know that when they say, well, you know, they shut us off at this time. Um, there's reasons they're not just avoiding them or not doing their job, um, they gotta be able to finish those calls at a certain time. So, um, I thought it was important for this board to know in that, uh, thank you both for finding that solution. Um, and hopefully moving forward, um, it works, uh, for Ms. Net working with your team of people, Ms. Lori, to help what they need and.
I also give credit to Luke, he, he is looking into that and does see the frustration, and I think it helps to see the emails too that, that come through of what people are seeing, for their perception on their side. We just need to fix that, so.
Yeah, thank you for both working together on that.
Uh, one question.
Yes.
Um, I'm, I see all the different revenues, but you've got a separate one for boats. Do we have a separate one for recreational vehicles?
No.
Don't we collect for the stickers for the recreational off-road?
Um, it's all under the title transfers. The boats is, um, um, is a two-dollar fee that's added to any type of boat transfer.
Okay.
So, the, the ATVs work just like a regular motor vehicle, though as far as, all, all the, um, revenue for that goes right into title transfers and.
Okay.
And excise tax.
And these, these revenues aren't shared with the state or anything? Are these partial reven, revenues that are shared with other entities, or are they all just directly ours?
They're shared with them first, and then this is ours.
Okay, so.
Does that make sense, so?
That's why.
It's all sent to them, and then we get, this is what we get back.
And so, this tells you how much work they do for a percentage.
Right.
Um, and why I'm saying that is, um, we do a lot of work for other entities for a percentage of, um, the work. So, a lot of people think it's, um, Pennington County doing it to them. Um, they don't know that other entities are sharing the load, and we're just doing the work.
Right.
They're sharing, they're sharing the money, I should say, so, um, it's huge to know that sometimes when people, uh, think we're collecting a hundred percent on all this stuff, and we're the ones doing it, you know, because some of this, is it mandated or, um, on these fees? Or how do the fees, all these fees come about?
They're all by state statute.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I don't think people know that a lot of times.
So, what percent, oh, for an example, like motor vehicle, is that one-quarter percent of, so if every dollar the state gets, the county gets twenty-five percent?
On motor vehicle, correct.
Okay.
And that's, um, excise tax is what that is.
Okay.
That's excise tax.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All right.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next, we have Fire Administrator. Jerome, you're up, Jerome.
We see you out there, Jerome.
He's a little taller than the rest of them.
You cannot hide.
Whoa, he brought the whole, anybody left in the county to fire a fire now? Okay, you're up, Jerome.
Before Jerome gets started, I have a question for him.
Yes, sir.
Un, unrelated to the budget, how's our firefighter that got hurt up on Mount Rushmore Road?
He's, uh, doing well, he's recovered, it was a minor injury.
Okay, good.
But he is, yeah. It was. Never did.
Long time no see, boys. I miss you guys. Ron's doing an awesome job.
Trying.
He's, he's informing me on all your issues. I, they, we don't have all that time, but. All right, Jerome.
Ready?
Tell us the changes, what's going on with the fire, um, what you're short, um, why you're short, that kinda stuff.
Well, I'll go ahead and, uh, give our presentation here to Chairman Haddock, Commissioners, members of the public. And please present the twenty-twenty Pennington County Fire Service Budget Request. Uh, Pennington County Fire Service consists of five hundred and ten volunteer firefighters associated with eighteen independent fire departments with twenty-five fire stations serving county taxpayers. Along with our regional fire service partners, Rapid City Fire Department and Ellsworth Air Force Base Fire Department, brings a total to twenty fire departments, seven hundred and thirty-four firefighters, both career and volunteer, with thirty-four fire stations serving and protecting citizens of Pennington County's two thousand eight hundred and eighty-four square miles. In twenty eighteen, our volunteer fire departments outside the, um, in the county responded to sixty-one hundred calls for service. Rapid City Fire Department responded to seventeen thousand eight hundred and twenty-six calls for service, which brings our total in twenty eighteen, twenty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-six calls. Uh, the numbers continue to show an upward trend on calls for service, creating increased financial challenges on the fire service, both the volunteer and career agencies. Uh, County Fire was established in nineteen seventy-seven to support and coordinate the fire-related public safety efforts of the volunteer fire department system that was established in nineteen fifties and sixties. The Board of Commissioners previously established a Fire Service Board in nineteen seventy-three, and this is a very similar structure to the way the Planning Commission within the Planning Department functions. And this is to financially assist the volunteer fire department system in providing firefighting services to the county taxpayers. Uh, today, County Fire and the volunteer fire departments, public safety collaboration includes emergency response, mutual aid agreements, strategic planning functions, training, assisting with financial business needs of the volunteer fire departments, uh, public information, firework safety and prevention, addressing planning and zoning fire-related code issues and other support functions. County Fire's primary focus is supporting and maintaining the volunteer fire department system to serve the taxpayers of Pennington County. County Provider, County Fire provides workers' compensation for sixteen of our volunteer fire departments, and four hundred and fifty volunteer firefighters in the county are covered by this vital requirement to comply with South Dakota state statutes. And this, uh, accounts for the four, um, four fourteen line item of this year, forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for personnel. Uh, since nineteen ninety, County Fire has been responsible for the countywide communication system that also has first use honors to effectively manage the complexity of incidents they encounter annually. This is a system includes signaling and paging for all of our fire departments, ambulance services, emergency management, search and rescue, dive teams, law enforcement, et cetera. Uh, two-way radio voice communications has covered all of our fire departments, ambulance services, emergency management, and search and rescue. In nineteen ninety-two, this system did become unified with the Rapid City Fire Department, and that avoids several issues that plague governments and fire response agencies across the country in interoperability communications as they respond to fires, disasters, and other emergencies. The Fire Service Board outright owns the Sage Creek Tower in eastern Pennington County, which supports other county agencies' two-way radio communications needs. Uh, County Fire's annual budgets in the past, um, over the past decade have ranged from two hundred seventy-five thousand to three hundred thousand dollars. The fire tax fund, the fire tax funds County Fire, the Fire Service Board per state statute, and can only be used for fire service-related expenses. Uh, this fire tax is separate from any of the district levies, but it's worth noting that the County Fire Tax Amount has steadily decreased each year from rate of one point three zero in two thousand eleven to, uh, point zero eight five is used in the twenty nineteen budget cycle with use of CPI and stored CPI. The current Pennington County Fire Service and V, uh, Volunteer Fire Department System budget requirements are forty to fifty times less than surrounding states' county-funded fire service systems. Uh, continuing reduction degradation of but, degradation of the budget directly does impact Pennington County Fire Service, volunteer fire department members annual budgeting cycles as they depend on the financial contributions and services that County Fire provides on an annual basis. In our twenty twenty, uh, fire tax and twenty twenty budget request, the County Fire Tax will provide, according to the auditor, proxying two hundred twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars, and that's up eight thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars from twenty nineteen. We are requesting an additional fifty thousand dollars to bring our request up to twenty-nine, to twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety, twenty-seven thousand, two hundred seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars, which is up about approximately fifty thousand dollars. This is still less than our twenty nineteen request. Uh, realistically, this budget should be in the neighborhood of about three hundred fifty to three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, what kind of projects are we looking at over the next five to ten years that will require this kind of funding? And what are we looking at in the immediate future here over the next year or so? Some of our large-scale projects include paging issues, uh, communications issue both north of Quinn and Creighton to the river. We have communications and paging issues in Canada Basin area and Ascenic area, and communications and paging issues in Hill City, Deerfield, Rochester, and the immediately adjacent areas. Uh, we're looking at possibility of loss of the current tower site in Cantrum Boulevard, which provides, uh, the core of the county here as far as paging and communications. And of course, we're dealing with the two thousand twenty-three, uh, state-mandated replacement as far as our radios. So, we're looking at trying to meet those requirements for our radios that are in dispatch. Some of the other things that we're looking at is a fire depel, fire department development and assistance funding that will help some of our fire departments that do not have, um, the continuous, uh, local state steady funding to help with some of their needs. That would cover things such as, um, matching grant, grant funds, helping them bring up their equipment and facilities up to snuff, and so on, as far as the development funds that we're looking at. We're also looking at, um, a future with the B twenty-one Raider Plan. We see increased needs for recruitment and retention, uh, increased needs for training, cost share of some type of a training facility with our city, with the Rapid City Fire Department or other partners, expected increase in population, of course, our call volumes, updating facilities and other costs that need to be identified. Do have quite a bit of maintenance load that we do maintain, and I wanna emphasize our paging and our core radio networks are shared, not just with the County Fire Service, but all the EMS services, ambulances, and et cetera. We do have the Cascade System and the Trailer, we have fit testers that fit test all of our firefighters in the county. We have CPR mannequins that are routinely used for between a thousand to twelve hundred citizens across the county annually. Uh, our SEBA MAE's trailer and other items have used for training props. Some of the funding options that we could suggest to you to help us make up this fifty thousand dollar shortfall is, um, our first option that we like to talk or just put out to you is making up this, uh, the shortfall through general fund money. Now, why would we wanna request general fund money? Our communications network is used by all the fire departments, all the ambulance services across the county. It does not matter if the city, uh, with the Rapid City, City Box Elder, Wall, Wasta, Hill City, so on and so forth. So, all the taxpayers benefit whether in a township or a city or out in the county with just our communication system alone. Again, and our paging services are used by all the first responder agencies countywide. Cascade System and Trailer is again used by all the fire departments regardless of affiliation. Uh, that is one option for us to look at as far as helping us with this, uh, fifty thousand, additional fifty thousand dollars that we're asking for. Another option we could throw out to you is adjusting or taking the workers' compensation payment out of the fire fund and putting it under the normal workers' compensation in the county with this office continuing to maintain it, but the funding would actually come from another, from the other source as far as workers' compensation. Two other options that we could discuss with you is allow the Fire Service Board to continue for now as it is managing its reserve fund as part of the yearly operations budget, while maintaining the eighteen to twenty percent reserve target that I'm under the sets. And we have, as we promised this board two years ago, that we would meet eighteen or twenty percent reserve, and we have done so, and we'll continue to do that. And the last one, as far as the last potential option, and again, we're not here to want to increase the size of government, we're just simply here to try to maintain and keep up with what's going on as far as what's been happening here in the county, but there is the option for the county to do some type of knockdown. Just in conclusion, on behalf of Pennington Fire Service and as firefighters and the departments, thank you for the opportunity to present our proposed twenty-twenty budget for your review. I do have some members of our fire service that can make some comments for us also.
Yep, here, just four-minute, Jerome, questions for Jerome?
My only question is, cause can I get a copy of what you've written down? And the reason why I ask that is I looked through my, my budget book, and I don't see.
Yeah.
I don't see no shortfall.
I didn't either, that's why I asked.
It throwing me off when I, when you said that, I'm going, I'm looking at this and hearing this.
I'll make sure that you get that.
Okay.
So, Jerome, um, on workman's comp, explain how that works through the fire department, I mean, um, so everybody's on the same page for workman's comp?
State statute requires us to provide workers' compensation to all of our volunteer firefighters, so we do so. I mean, that just runs through, it's paid for out of the fire tax, and then it's operated through our office.
So, it's paid through fire, through the, basically County Fire.
That's correct.
Through the taxpayers.
Correct.
Okay, so, taking it through general fund, they probably, and maybe we have to ask Cindy, I don't think that's, that's gonna be one of the things you can do, but. The other thing is, how many career, um, firemen and how many volunteer, did you break that down?
Yeah, to, totally, we roster around five hundred and ten.
Volunteers?
Yeah, volunteers, and the approximately, the other ones are, um, approximately two hundred and twenty-five career personnel between Ellsworth, the city, Battle Creek, and Box Elder.
Okay. Cindy, did you have something to, to fill in here for me? Thank you, go ahead and stay there, Jerome.
Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor, you basically said what I was gonna say, I don't believe that we can take those funds out of the general fund, actually pay it out of there. Now, if you guys.
Workman comp part, right.
Right, right, if you do wanna support it with an operating transfer from general to support that fund, you could probably do that.
Okay. Questions?
Madam Chairman, if I make a comment, please?
Yes.
Just wanna thank Holly, helping out on Tuesday. Some of the stuff we had going on, we had a pretty full day Tuesday, and Holly helped us out, appreciate that, so just like make the public comment on that.
To me, you've got five hundred and ten guys that you're, through this Fire Service Board, I know they get, um, money from the taxpayers through the County Fire. They get fire districts, but, um, bottom line, fifty thousand dollars to support five hundred and ten firefighters and to keep them so they're equipped, cause we're finding out, and we just saw that Gary was one of them that was brought up to nine-one-one, um, through New York, remember the, um, nine-eleven? And some of those issues, not having the right equipment and not having the right stuff in order to fight these fires and do what they have to do, um. I don't know, for me, that's a small price in a sense to pay for that many people that are going to be, um, needing this help.
I haven't sure.
If anybody has, sorry, Commissioner, if anybody has solutions other than, um, to cut that budget fifty thousand, I think, um, doesn't seem, um, for me, for what it's doing, um, I don't know, for me, I, I don't think that's quite right about that. Commissioner Ross, connect.
Yeah, a few weeks ago, Jerome and Todd stopped by my office, and we discussed the fifty thousand dollar shortfall and, uh, being a former firefighter and, and seeing, uh, how you unite all these volunteer fire departments, so they're on, on the same page using the same equipment. And you'll probably hear some war stories where you can, if you go to a fire and you don't have equipment that you're used to, and, and it's consistent, you can run into major problems. So, then you gotta ask yourself, what the, what's the price of a life? You know, it's just as simple as that. I hope that uh one way or another that we can figure out a way to work out that shortfall. And thanks for coming up to the office and explaining the different taxation processes.
And we have Jerome and then Pepper that's on this. And then if we look at the emergency management budget and some of their stuff um and do somewhat of the comparables, you'll see um the difference on some of that. Um I don't know if there's more granting programs and things like that. Um I know with these this many firemen on this board, it's not like they haven't tried to come up with different funding sources, take my word for it. Um but a lot of times, um especially lately, there's always fires and other things um to do, so. Long story short, I think it's well worth um funding these this source. Um me, it's no brainer. So don't get me wrong, if they were, they had a budget that was ridiculous and they had people getting paid ridiculously high prices for what they're doing or this equipment and this things were um huge on capital costs. I'm sorry, I'd probably pick it apart, but um look at it compared to some of the other budgets and uh equipment and different things that these guys do. Um I think it's pretty amazing and how we tried to raise that levy and do some stuff last year. I know we could do the opt out if we wanted to opt out. But I think that's not going to be happening anytime soon once and I was willing to move forward with that with Todd and and uh Todd's very efficient at these kind of things, Todd Togan, that um there's a lot, schools want to opt out and um we want to sounds like move forward and see how we're doing with the real tax and we want to do, I mean, pretty soon, guys, you have three things and opting out and you're opting out on everything. Um they're gonna have a hard time moving forward and saying, okay, as much as I say um the firemen, it should be something that's a no brainer. Why wouldn't you guys give these guys more money to protect and save and do what they want to do? But unfortunately, that's not how some people look at it. Until it happens to them, then they're okay paying it. Other than that, and so I'm the reason. That's what, that's the biggest excuse with any opt out you ever or anything you have to pay for a tax that I ever hear, so. Um like I said, we we were looking at opting out, but this is, you're not going to get opt out through not very easily in the next year or two, I'll just tell you. So if anybody else has a different solution for these guys, I'm willing to work with them. Ron's willing to work with them. Tell me what we need to do, because that's what we do. Um for the firemen and and the people that work in here, um they do have their fundraisers and things to try to help. It's not like they're just sitting around saying, okay, we're not gonna do anything about this. For the last couple of years ago, you know, I've been on the fire board and I've tried different things and uh I don't know where you get the money unless you tell them the fire districts, let's raise those. But um I don't know. Anybody got a solution? I'm sure this board, this fire board and Jerome and even me, I'm willing to help if you if you have a solution that can move us forward, so we're not short.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Oh, did you have something?
Let me just look at this.
Go ahead.
No.
Thank you.
You know, I don't, I don't see this as a surprise. I mean, ever since I was on this commission, we'd gotten warnings that it was gonna happen.
Right.
This was gonna happen if the opt out didn't happen, because I remember at the original, what originally happened, wasn't there two? I'm not gonna say that because I think I, that was answered to me earlier. But reserves were too much or something along those lines. But we knew this day was coming. So now, I guess my question is, is what happens after this? So so we agreed to the to balance the budget to fifty thousand this year. Next year, it's gonna be that plus ten, that plus ten following year. I mean, we need a sustainable solution to this besides all of a sudden it's coming up short every year and and either the opt out is it or we take the acceptance, the stance to do something about it or or the group does. And I think it's a group effort effort that of the board that needs to come forward with the possibilities because we knew it was coming. You know what I mean? Uh we got to make it sustainable somehow or another. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And I'm not saying I have the solution, but the opt out was presented a couple of years ago. Whether it is or not, I don't know. I I I'm just looking trying to see, is it something we need to get shared costs from the city also maybe or?
That's what I was.
You know what I'm saying?
You won't, you won't get shared costs, but here's the deal. Um last year, we were told um that it would be sustainable for, if you remember from Julie, and she had that paper, um said it would be sustainable to this year and we need to start looking in the future. Right? Because it was five thousand difference. We could use our reserves, we use our reserves, so we did. And then we said, okay, we could do the opt out. So we did. We looked at the opt out even before Ron was on here and I was still in there. And then we heard the school in the last, because when we started working on something, Todd can vouch for that. We started looking into that uh three or four meetings and then pretty soon we're like, that ain't gonna happen. That ain't gonna happen anytime soon. Not with us, with other people's goals and our goals and then throw another one on top. So I said, it's not gonna be this year. But if we want to make it a goal, once all of these things are done and we believe in this, um let's move forward. But it's uh you might be sustaining these guys for a year or two and I'm hoping in that time um that something else cha- something else changes, but I'm I'm telling you, two hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars is fo- five hundred and ten people. You got, I'd like to see and not to be mean to the career firemen, because they're good men and they work very hard. How much is that? Two hundred and twenty five um men, fire department? How many fire departments in Rapid City, guys?
Stations.
Stations?
Yes.
There's eight stations in Rapid City.
Eight stations? How many we got?
Twenty five.
Thank you. So you see where I'm going? And if we can do it different, some, some, somebody tell me and Cindy, if you can tell me, um if anybody, how do we make it sustainable to take care of these guys? So something's building up a little bit. Because it's not like he's raising his salaries and he's and he's spending on frivolous things. I'm I'm on that board. We're at there eleven o'clock at night handing out stuff to people um for equipment and different stuff that they have nothing uh to where they don't, they're getting um different um breathing apparatus, different stuff. These guys have got tons of grants or um the grants they've been getting, you guys, is not for their funding sources in a sense for uh his budget or anything. Those funding sources are for some of the equipment they're getting. So you see this, but they are getting grants and stuff for this equipment. So it's not like they're just going out there and not getting any grants. It's just not to add to their budget. It's to help with their equipments. So um just being on there for two years, um I see it. So I just don't know how to help it. And these guys have been trying to help me too and we don't, Cindy, we don't know how we can raise it. So we need some help, because we've met with Cindy and she knows, she knows that. I'm like, Cindy, we're gonna go opt out. We're gonna have to. But then when I start looking at it, Cindy, and that's what I'm telling you, that's it. Um we have tried.
Along, along those lines, Cindy, while you're answering questions, if it, if there was an opt out, what would it be? What would be the cost? I mean, I mean, it's easy to sit back and say, all this stuff opt out's gonna cost and people would vote it down, but if it was twenty five cents for that, you know, per person, that's, most people would change their minds. So have we looked at any of that with the?
No, we have not put any numbers to an opt out to see what that would do for the levy.
Okay.
Even if it, but think about it, even if you're a quarter, you got a quarter, here, here's what I'm told. You get a quarter from there and you get a dollar from there and then I gotta pay another five dollars here and then I got six opt outs and then I got, you know, three opt outs with a um um now you've got my will tax, so you added that to it.
Wanted to know the cost.
No, but uh I'm only saying this because that's what I said to people. Not because you're wrong, Commissioner, right? Because I'm like, it's twenty five cents or it's a dollar. Come on, you're helping the firemen. And then people are like, okay, Deb, now now take that times five or six other um entities that just added to the issue. So um, okay, I'll be quiet, Miss Cindy, go ahead.
Sorry. I understand what you're saying.
I need help.
I hear the same thing when people pay taxes or, you know, when people talk about their taxes, but
Ma'am.
Um the one thing that I wanted to point out was on the means of finance for the county fire, which I don't have that front page. Fancy spreadsheet across the.
Front page, ma'am?
Yeah.
Okay.
The the means of finance, the meat of the matter.
Okay.
Um if you look all the way across to the right hand side, there's forty nine thousand four hundred and four dollars. That's the anticipated reserve at the end of twenty twenty. Okay? So.
Fifty thousand.
That could be your fifty thousand for next year. And um and that gives you a little more time to figure out how you are going to move forward in twenty twenty one.
Are you understanding that, um Jerome?
I'll review, I'll review with her, make sure we're right and I'm correct and I understand what she's saying.
Can you show me where that's at on here? And for some reason, I'm not. Thank you, Miss Cindy. Okay, thank you. And that comes from?
Looking the beginning balance of two thousand and nineteen plus minus budget revenue anticipating where we're gonna be at the end of nineteen.
Right.
And then subtracting the thirty two thousand basically over here, so.
So it does come up at the forty nine, so they're, that's what they would use. They wouldn't have to ask us for?
Right. Nothing would have to come from the general fund this year if we chose, if you chose to use that.
Did you, okay, show Jerome what you just did so he can explain.
I will show you.
Okay.
Okay, Jerome, do you get what she's doing?
Yeah, and I'll go over with her again to make sure that we're not.
And me, so you understand it?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner DeSanto.
That, that's probably gonna be my suggestion for this year, but obviously we need to work on a permanent solution and we I wonder if it'd be a good idea to maybe draft some sort of article for the journal and see what we get back in editorial comment. Press release, I mean.
Yeah. Perhaps.
So that we know.
Good. You ready for?
What the public thinks.
Yeah.
Because I'm with you. I mean, that's ninety eight dollars per firefighter. The additional fifty thousand uh for five, well, whatever that number was, I changed pages, but um we're getting by cheap.
Right.
That's mine. And our our citizens are getting by cheap for the type of protection that they get.
Yes, sir.
So let's find out
Well.
whether or not they're willing to give up somebody showing up in three minutes or somebody showing up in twenty.
Here's what that entails when you start doing and thinking opt out. What happens is, not a big deal today, because it depends on your timing. So if we put it out today, um we'll see when you have three opt outs on a page. So that's what I said. It's not, it's not off the table. It's the timing and when you would do that opt out. This year's not gonna be an opt out, because you have what the, I don't know how much the school needs. And then we want to move forward with something um pretty soon. People are like, okay, um three opt outs in the next year, next two years, maybe ain't a big deal for us. We all, you know, say our budget's fine, but we're always saying, you know, I don't pay that much and you and you and s- and people know that. You see where I'm going? So that's not, that's, that's not like it's not an option. It's the timing in which you do it. So today might be awesome, but uh when they're putting that out there and and they have three different entities on there, that might be a whole different story. So what's the solution? I think in the future it is an opt out. I just don't think the timing, like I said, when we start looking into it, um Todd and and some of the volunteers that were working on this, um it's, it's not the right timing. And that's why I told them, you guys don't want to do that right now. And if we have to help, you need to go to the commission and tell them at this time um that we need their help. In this case, we have the forty nine. If I'm correct, thank you, Miss Cindy. Um but um also we need to figure out at this rate with Miss Cindy, what's it gonna be next year? And we're way ahead of the game. So maybe we can find other funding sources and I will help. And so I'm sure this board um from your passion, from what we've done, um Ron and both uh Mark have been volunteer fire department men, so they kind of know that what that entails. Maybe we can find that, but um this last year, uh we've had more fires and and more deaths than we ever had. So most of our stuff has been working on um taking care of the public and with this budget. And it's been the worst it's been how long, Denny? You know that to be a fact. We haven't had this many deaths and 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 this many bad fires. Um I don't, I don't remember even with career firemen, so. You need to speak, Denny? Okay. Um one thing I wanted to ask and uh with the guys that are here and I keep hearing this and I will probably always hear this, why is Jerome's uh position important to you guys? Do we need him and why do we need him? Because this has been going on and Denny knows this, this has been going on a long time. Why is that position even needed? Um you'd save yourself, what, another hundred thousand? You wouldn't have all this going on. Uh you could regulate it yourself. Maybe you guys would like to come up when I had time to speak on why that, why, why this position in this basically this fire administration job is important to your group.
Thank you, madam. Um my name's Gary Swartland. I'm the Assistant Chief at Rockerville. I'm also currently the Assistant Chair for the Pennington County Fire Service Board and I also serve as the Assistant Chair for the Pennington County Emergency Management Users Board appointed by the Fire Service Board. You know, we've been talking here about the the budget here today and fifty thousand dollars going up and going for an opt out. And you know, the biggest goal here we have is to make this a little bit less painful on the taxpayers. Um for some reason, you know, our budget was restricted and, you know, um tied down for a little bit, but unfortunately, with everything that's going on, we're gonna have to, you know, gradually increase the budget here in order to do trainings and stuff like that. The Office of the Pennington County Fire Coordinator coordinates all that, you know, through our meetings and through the Fire Service Board and everything like that so that not one department is caught with um training one person to get up the mandatory training requirements, you know, so that we can put classes together and get everybody starting that bond of working together um in order to do that training, you know, people start working together and then they start building those bonds, but you know, I might be on, somebody might be on Blackhawk, but I'm on Rockerville and then you've got Box Elder over here, but they're already used to working together because of the training that they do. And there is not one fire agency in this county that can do it all by themselves. Not Rapid City, not Rockerville, not Blackhawk, not Box Elder. They all rely on each other. And the Office of Penning County Fire Coordinator brings that together so that we can all work together in unison and in harmony. You know, we talked about grants and stuff like that. Unfortunately, the Fire Service Board or the um Fire Coordinator's Office is not eligible for a lot of grants. So grants you might not hear from are grants that we have done, which one department has sponsored for the entire county. Just within the last couple of years, um Rapid Valley and North Haynes both sponsored a grant approximately one point one million dollars to get us all new SCBA so that we match with the city. You know, that was a lot of time, effort and energy put on by two people um writing those grants and everything like that and coordinating that. That's a huge savings for the taxpayers when we're able to go out there and get some of those federal dollars and get everything so that it's in unison, working together. You know, the fire departments, the DEX districts did that all on their own and the tax share from the money that they'd get, which is huge benefit and savings. The training requirements nowadays are going up more and more and your costs are gonna go up just for the average structural firefighter. You're looking at a hundred and forty hours at minimum just to get your basic firefighter one and two completed.
Gary, tell me how many of those volunteer fire departments that teach those for for nothing, teach those classes for nothing?
Quite a few of them teach them for nothing. They just do them as of their own time. You know, or if we have to get special in specialty instructors in in order to do something, you know, we can cover those costs by coming to the Fire Coordinator and saying, hey, we need this and approaching the board. You know, you've also got your wildland firefighting, which is basically thirty six hours. That's just to get an entry level to comply to NWCG requirements, which are national requirements. You know, R W S fit testing and things like that. And then you've got your medical side of everything. You know, we've talked about the cost share, things like this and looking at billing other people. Well, they cover other things too. The Fire Service Board does cover all the paging for everybody, first responders in Pennington County and outside as well. You know, the sheriff's office, the city P. You know, the sheriff's office, the city PD, you know, fire service and everything like that. So having the Fire Coordinator there to kind of guide everybody and have everybody unified under one thing is a really huge, important deal for this county and the taxpayers.
Any questions for Mr. Gary? Okay.
Good afternoon, I am Todd Tobin. I'm currently the Training Officer and Public Information Officer for the Johnson Siding Volunteer Fire Department. I am a past Fire Chief, past Vice Chair of the Fire Service Board for Pennington County, and currently with both Jerome and his predecessor, Denny Gordon, who is present today, have assisted in budget-related matters regarding the Fire Service Board as a support role. And without covering the same ground that Gary just covered, I first want to thank you very much for the opportunity to come before you today and to be able to share about what really is a very complicated system, nationally, state, and certainly here at the county level, of the fire service itself. And as you come in and have to make these decisions, I don't envy that pressure of being able to jostle here and justify there and try to find and do the right thing. And then when we bring into the fold of the, how the fire service works in our state specifically, we have a volunteer system. We are ninety-two point eight percent of all of the volunteer firefighter, or all the firefighters in South Dakota are volunteers, nationally, it's seventy percent of the one point one-three million firefighters in, in the United States today. In our state, and the state statute which you have to follow along and abide by, then mandates things like the workers' comp and things of this nature, and finding places of how that has to happen. But one of the other things that is very frustrating for just the general public, elected officials in the fire service itself, is understanding how it works. As we sat with Commissioner Roskine and went through a lot of these things and, and such, the bottom line is that just finding out how this system works, it still doesn't take away from the fact of the comment of the hundreds of hours annually. And in the officer ranks, literally can be thousands of hours in a donated fashion, whether we use an IRS deductible on it or not, of time that is put in. And the history, very, very briefly, of that, unlike law enforcement, which adopted a paid model early on, the fire service, probably our own worst enemy, has always prided itself in a volunteer ranks, and it's kicked the can down the road to where it's a difficult, difficult thing, how do we then fund the system and get everything up to speed? We would be the largest department in the county if we adopted countywide fire services, other states have done. And that would be very different than being the smallest budget, so in that, it's a scenario that, again, is difficult. So we have the fire tax, which when those income comes in from all property owners within the county, and that tax is collected, and then anything that's not spent, state statute requires it has to remain, so that's how that fund builds up. And we have the fire districts that contract with the local department, and then that district, of course, will put in play a, a different levy, depending on what that department needs. And that fire tax, although we can build up a reserve, it can be gone in a single morning. And we have a bad wildland fire that's in our county, whether it's east of the Black Hills or within. What will happen is literally with a couple or two or three orders of air tanker support to come in, could literally consume fifty thousand dollars in a morning. So we try to do the best we can with the limited resources. Jerome Harvey, our current Fire Administrator, inherited a very longstanding, solid system that his predecessor, Denny Gordon, for over twenty-seven years, and two prior predecessors to Denny, that built the foundation in place that we have today, and we're in changing times. And I'll conclude on this to say that for many years, I would come to this budget hearing process with Denny Gordon, the predecessor to Jerome as the Fire Administrator, it really was not even a discussion point. It wasn't until there were some changes, both on the Board of Commissioners, previous strife between people and so forth, and life comes up, and there is a change in retirement to the previous Fire Administrator, did a lot of these things come to light. And so our goal is the Fire Administration, for the Fire Administration and the Fire Service Board, is to provide to you the best facts that we can to help you make decisions. And so on our side of the street, we would not like to have to go to an opt-out, we'd like to be able to do any number of things, because that's a public challenge for all of us. We would like to not have these costs go up, but life is what it is. And so as a Fire Service Board, which is a direct connection to you, and in nineteen seventy-three was established for that purpose, so that you didn't have to have Fire Chiefs coming to you each and every time to bring requests for the, the funding that the county then provided, is still in continuation today, although it continues to change as to the challenges mentioned previously. And so we would hope that with any information we can provide to you with five-year forecasts that will help you in making decisions, so all of us can come up with a solution. I love the idea, Commissioner DeSanto, about an op-ed, I think that's a phenomenal way of gauging some politics, but by the nature of how an opt-out is, of course, there's a whole series of things that have to be done, and we wouldn't be able to get that done in this year, this cycle anyway, but going forward to the future, that makes a tremendous amount of sense to do those kinds of things. And then the last thing I'll state is that's the collaborative effort we've always had with the board, and we're very, very appreciative to have the support that we have today.
Any questions?
No questions, just a comment, I just know that anyone in the public, if they're laying upside down in their car, stuck with their top of their car crushed in, wondering when somebody's going to show up, the sooner the better. And if we have to start eliminating personnel and departments because we can't meet this need, I can guarantee you that there's going to be a public outcry. So I'd like to reverse it on them and see what they have to say about how, again, the difference between a three-minute response time and a twenty-minute response time.
They don't care whose logo is on the side of a truck.
They don't care, they just want to know who's going to show up with the jaws of life and the seatbelt cutter to get them out of the car, so.
And to the last comment to that point, if I may, and to the, the purpose of the Fire Administrator, county fire, as it's often known, or the Pennington County Fire Administrator, which the Fire Service Board is part of that, is that that system is put in place, the ability to win nine-one-one, which is shared by all of us, is called, it does not matter. If we count across a county line, it does not matter if Rapid City, who covers out way beyond their borders, but doesn't cost the county anything, because it's paid by the individuals that the pensions themselves. So we really have a remarkable system that has been put in place that would not exist today if it wasn't for the efforts of the current administrator and the previous administrator, specifically in Denny Gordon, as to the system that was originally established thanks to the Board of Commissioners in nineteen seventy-three. So thank you for starting this process a long time ago, that's a well-oiled machine today, and is the envy of the state.
Thank you.
Todd, I think that back in seventy-three would have been Corky Jacobs, followed by Tom Rubishaw.
That's right.
And Corky, I can tell you, he took many of us Johnson Siding firefighters to eastern South Dakota, where we did our first training, and of course, it's changed a lot now, but thank God there's volunteers, huh?
Yep.
And.
Good presentation.
I believe that Mr. DeSanto is right, the majority of people believe what he's saying. But when we've got opt-outs killed or things killed, it's the minority that's usually speaking the loudest. We've had people that we've had in here, and we know that from a commissioner, you got a hundred and fifty acres and you pay sixty dollars, and that's with fire district. And that's too much. And they're frightened, and they're saying, you do that, we'll kill it. And that's the minority, and for some reason, they seem to speak the loudest sometimes. And if it was the majority, we know what they'd say, and, and ask Cindy, she heard the speech when I was there. Cindy, these people are saving lives, you're telling me that we can't do an opt-out? People are going to go for this. These people save people's lives, there's no way they're going to tell the firemen, they're not going to pay them seventy-five cents or twenty-five more cents, as you're going to say? Why wouldn't you? That's crazy that you wouldn't. But you heard it for your ears for how many years, a couple of years, Mr. DeSanto? And then what did they say they were going to do to us? So I, I, I know what you're saying, and I'm listening to what you're saying, and, and I know because I was going to help with this, because I'm like, you guys, this is a no-brainer. Cindy, what are you talking about? These people, there's, everything you say is true. And then you go in there and you go, okay, then you're, then you listen to people. And I'm not saying this isn't going to happen, but we need to figure out the timing. And I'll just tell you, the bottom line is, I, I truly believe in my heart, as my opinion, it's, the timing is at this year. And I know they said it last year, and we'll say, well, you're just going to keep putting it off, no, because actually, this year was going to be the time. We were talking about this one in January, Cindy, that this was, we had to move it forward, we had to do it by July, all this kind of stuff. So, um, yep.
One last thing I'd like to say, I'd like to thank Commissioner Roskine for his new role on the Fire Service Board as the liaison, and Commissioner DeSanto for being at our meeting here last week, thank you very much. And a special thanks to Commissioner Hadcock for the previous time she's spent with us, has just been an extraordinary relationship building that we honestly have not experienced in years past with this board, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Doug.
Guys? This guy's been with us a long time, just kidding. Good morning, sir, or afternoon.
My name's Damon Hartman, I'm the Dode Fire Chief. Jerome's role is very crucial for my district especially, is when I'm out of town, I don't have anyone that's in that role that's ready to step into the IC command. And Jerome is one of those that can step in, take control, and run the show of whatever the case is. So as a chief, having Jerome there, or whoever fills that position, having them there to be able to step in and take command of the scene, it just makes me as a chief a lot more relaxed for the days that I end up, and I'm gone for training myself, or I take some family time whenever I can get that arranged. I know I can rely on Jerome or whoever's in that position to actually step up and cover my district for me, until some of my other chief officers arrive on scene. Then Danny, Danny or Jerome, in these past few years, if one of my other assistant chiefs has showed up, they'll relinquish command to them if they want it. And most of my assistant chiefs, they like it if they remain as command, because it stays that consistency. And with Jerome's knowledge of who can we call if we need additional resources, he's got that right at his fingertips, and he makes that call. It just makes our life easier as a volunteers out there, as we are, we're volunteers. A lot of our people work in town, if we have an incident outside the city, we're relying on those that are retired, or those that can get, just drop it at a dime and go on their call. So having a support staff like Jerome there to help us out definitely benefits everybody in the county, so, thank you.
Thank you, Damon, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you.
Sean's one of our nine-one-one guys, too.
And I'll finish this off, Matt Thompson, Assistant Chief of North Haines Fire Department, also the Director of the Keystone Ambulance, and then like as Deb mentioned, I do work across the hall. I'll echo exactly what Chief Hartman said, having a person in that position is great, because obviously, when I'm at work, I can't leave. You know, if our chief is out of town, whether he's doing his work, or he's taking more additional training, or teaching classes, you know, it's crucial to have somebody there that can take that role for us. You know, looking last year, State Fire School, Chief White and I were just leaving town, we were just barely out of Pennington County, have instructor fire in our area. You know, having Jerome go up there to be able to call in more resources and know what's going on was huge for us. Another example with that, I know everybody remembers the Tilford Fire this last September. I was one of the first Pennington County resources on scene of that fire. First phone call I made was to Jerome, made sure he knew the gravity of the situation we had going on there, make sure he was coming up there. And then throughout that whole incident, he was crucial in making sure we got the Sturgis firefighters, all the initial responders on that scene, off the scene, since their mind was not in the right place at that moment, at that moment. So having Jerome there and getting more resources throughout the day was huge. You know, then come two in the morning, you've got all of our Pennington County resources that have been up all day, working all night on this fire. Jerome knew, you know, Custer would be happy to come up, so he calls Custer and was able to get Custer out there. The only other piece I have where that position's really crucial, too, is especially in the work comp administration. You know, if we submit a claim for North Haines on the, of the work comp, it's pretty much just call Jerome's office, and it's handled from there. You know, we're not having to go through all of the steps with the claims administrators following step by step. And if we don't have him in that position, that now puts that on the Fire Chief, or if the county's still paying for that insurance, now that's going to put that on HR's office, to be the one helping us administer that claim. So HR's already got a big enough pool of county employees, now we're going to add five hundred and ten more if we would eliminate that position. That could make a lot more work for a small office of two people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Good point, Matt.
Any questions?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Thanks, guys. Are we doing Joe next? Or?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? Okay.
Request recess for five minutes.
Second. All right, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. I submitted some things yesterday, apologize for the, I guess, short notice on that. Get the eyes from Holly over here, didn't realize exactly what was entailed in it, and I think we got through it, so hopefully, you've had some time to review it, I'll just go through some of the, the notes I've made. Some of the big projects we've got coming up next year are the Sheridan Lake Road project, we're hopeful that that project will be let this fall yet, the projected cost in two thousand and twenty is two and a half million dollars. Again, that's an estimate, we don't know how much they're going to get done in, in two thousand and twenty. We received five and a half million dollars from the SD DOT, and then we will use a, the STP loan over the course of ten years. You guys should have our five-year plan in the packet there. Kind of breaks down where the money's coming from for each of these large projects. Seven million dollars is coming from our, our reserves for the Sheridan Lake Project, and then thirteen million dollars from the STP funds for that project. Deadwood Avenue is a joint project between the city and the county. The county portion removes some dangerous curves right there at the city-county line. We're currently under right-of-way negotiations in both the city and the county, the county has one of two landowners acquired, one to go. This project was accounted for in our two thousand and nineteen budget, but delays have, have since pushed that back, and we're hoping for a, a fall bid letting or a early spring bid letting for construction in two thousand and twenty. Some of those delays are just utility relocations, some delays in getting the, the poles and whatnot. Rodsford Road, it is anticipated that we'll begin right-of-way negotiations for this project, hopefully September of this year. Bid letting for the project in spring of two thousand and twenty with construction in the same year. In the two thousand and twenty budget, I've included a million and a half dollars for this project from our reserves. And then the bridge was originally scheduled to be construction in two thousand and eighteen, but had, has run into some delays. We've, we're getting close to getting designs for that project, so we're still hopeful for a fall two thousand and nineteen bid letting and construction in two thousand and twenty. The right-of-way for that portion of the project has already been acquired a long time ago by Heine. And then some notes received last, I think it was last Friday, we received a note that the state receives some federal money. It's, I believe it was twenty million dollars, they took in three million of it, and then dispersing seventeen million of it to the counties with structurally deficient bridges. Pennington County, I believe, has twenty-six structurally deficient bridges. So we are receiving, or we we expect to receive five hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars to use on one of our structurally deficient bridges throughout the county over the course of the next three years. We would like to use this money in our, our budget to the year two thousand and twenty. There's a couple of dead-end roads that are one way, are one way in, one way out, Sonquist Lane and then Thunderhead Falls, both of which are one way in, one way out.
Joe, just to stop you, did you put that anywhere in your two thousand and twenty budget?
No, we, we just received that last last Friday, we received news, news of that, so.
Thank you, sir.
That did not get put into your budget packet for, for this. With that, I'll stand for any questions on the projects, I do have, I guess, do you want me to go into FTE request, I know that was supposed to be submitted with the request, what, two, a month ago? I know that was supposed to be submitted with the request, what, two, a month ago? But.
Your FTE request and how you're paying for it, or if you're just adding it, and basically where you're funding it from?
We're just going to kind of absorb that and we'll have to absorb it within our budget and kind of take some money from either overlay projects or some, you know, it's a total cost of sixty, with, what am I trying to say here? Benefits and all that stuff is about sixty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, and what is that FTE for?
It'd be a mechanic in our shop. Currently, we have seventy-five vehicles that require a DOT inspection. These require anywhere from a day to do, or a week, you know, it depends on what they find as far as what's wrong with the truck to get it out the door, you know, oil changes, routine maintenance, breakdowns, summer and winter equipment. We've got three hundred and ninety-seven pieces of equipment that these, we have five people, six including the foreman to take care of, in all four locations. So if, with the five mechanics, that's eighty pieces of equipment per mechanic. You up that to six mechanics, lowers it down to sixty, about sixty-six, sixty-seven pieces of equipment per mechanic. Yesterday, I went into our shop foreman's office, he's got twenty-five work orders on his desk of pieces of equipment that need to be fixed. So there's a backlog of equipment there, and it seems like, since I've taken this position, they've never gotten their head above water as far as their workload and what comes in, comes in faster than what they can fix it, so.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Miller?
Joe, on the South Rochford Road project, the one point five million is just for 2020 construction?
Correct, so I guess with that question, that's another question for you guys is, we've got.
And does that include the bridge?
I do not believe so, no. So that's a question for you guys, I guess. We have a total estimated budget with the revenues of nine point seven million dollars. With the pulling from reserves, not knowing if these projects are going to go, I don't know if we want to put, if you would like to put the money into our budget, or wait until these projects actually go and pull that money from reserves with a supplement.
What has been the past practice, maybe Cindy knows, what's the best way to disperse, or how it should be dispersed, our account, our accountant? Handicount. Yep.
Sorry, Commissioners, I cannot answer that, I don't know how they have prepared their budget in the past. I don't know if they've budgeted for those and then just kept budgeting if they had to put it off to the next year.
Mr. Mark Shock, do you know how that, how that worked in the budget? I know usually.
Mark Shock, Pennington County Highway.
Yes, sir.
Over the years, it's been done both ways. Most of the time, it has been budgeted in from the reserves, and if it's not used, it goes back to reserves. But I think this year was a bigger chunk that's proposed right now. I think Joe is asking, you know, if, if we don't, if some of these projects may not, may or may not come too light like we've seen in the past, so I guess the decision is to basically leave the dollar amount as it has been in the last, over the last four years, or close to that, or pull reserve dollars out and put in our budget.
Supplement it, like Lloyd said, just supplement it from your reserves?
Correct.
And that's good? Miss Cindy, okay. Anything else you need to share that might be changed from Sheridan Lake or Rochford that upped some of that, those costs, or anything that were below costs, above costs?
Not that we're aware of at this time.
Joe, would this five hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-five from the state cover those three or two, three suggested bridges?
So, that was talked about, we just had a pre-construction meeting with Jack Corr on our one hundred and sixty-fourth bridge yesterday, and you know, we were looking at possibly doing a one-lane bridge in these dead-end roads, do a design build, so at that two hundred thousand dollars, it wouldn't quite cover all of it, but we would have some money in our bridge funding to cover the remainder of that, so we could take care of those three structurally deficient bridges on those one-lane, or one-way in, one-way out, dead-end roads that have, you know, very small, small number of residences beyond those bridges.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like to say one thing, Mark, you've been a great mentor to Joe. I was just talking in the hallway, I'll be nice. What a good team, and moving us ahead in many ways from this team with Mr. Shock, with his experience and Joe, a lot of energy, and that new innovation, being younger than some of us. It just made a good combination, and you're both smiling a lot, so that's a good thing. So I've heard a lot of good things from the people that work there, I know a few of the guys there, and they enjoy working with both of you. You're a good team for them as well, and good mentors, so can't say enough about how you moved us ahead, and I hope to see more good things in the future for both of you. And, anybody else? Since he's been here, how long have you been here now, Joe?
Six months.
Six months.
Been doing a great job.
Yes.
Yep, I totally agree.
Thank you too, Mark.
I've got one more question on the South Rochford, South Rochford Road Bridge. Is it still, the hang-up is the angle, that we got to take it off of the road, or?
Nope, we've fixed that issue, the hang-up now is the bridge abutments. They had, Mark might have to correct me, but I believe they had, they wanted a counter, they had cast in place, bridge abutments, and the Bridge Design Office in Pier doesn't accept those, or that's not part of their criteria that they'll accept, so we have to have a, what would be a cantilever, bridge abutment design, or we've actually, our engineer is trying to come up with another mechanically stabilized, or yeah, MSE, mechanically stabilized wall, basically holding it back with the GeoGrid, so it increased the design and it may likely increase the cost as well.
I think it will, okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Do I have to say something nice about this guy?
Didn't get this pulled up, right? All right, thank you, Kevin Dome, Pennington County Sheriff, and there's a lot of slides, I'm just going to blow through some of them fairly quick because they were in the annual report, I put them in there just for reference, so you have them.
Should I tell you the line we have at first, Kevin, and then you just explain it?
What's that?
What we have on our, are you just going through this?
Can I run through the PowerPoint real quick?
Okay, sorry.
And then go back to any particular budget question, because some of those I might answer as we run through it, if I could do that.
Sounds good.
So again, just a quick overview of our different divisions, the law enforcement, and I always put a data in there about our calls for service. Citizen initiated up, deputy initiated down, you know, those sometimes just trade, if you will. More citizens calling, less proactive time for a deputy on the road, and also sometimes we have open positions, it's less deputy time as well. And twenty-four-seven continues to tick up in terms of activity. Our warrants in Civil Division, you can see our number of warrants received and served. We have a very active warrants division, and it runs probably fifteen percent, twenty percent, fifteen percent, twenty percent felony, the rest are misdemeanors. Pistol permits really ebb and flow, it depends on what's going on, and the national discussion seems to drive that more than anything. And you can see different years cause it to tick up or down. Crime data, that was in our annual report, and they give you a copy of that. Obviously, what happens in Pennington County, that includes Box Elder, Rapid City, and then, you know, Pennington County itself has a direct impact on, you know, our resources and our staffing.
It's crazy how much, if you look at murder, how much it's.
What's that?
From twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and then overall crime den in Pennington County for murders.
Yes, or murders from seventeen to eighteen, or, I mean, we're up two in, from seventeen to eighteen. If you'll do overall Pennington County, including all the entities that report, it's called NIBR's National Suicide Base Reporting System for Crimes, there was seven.
What does, Kevin, what does, with meth, what, what is used? I mean, is there everything that goes up there, or is there a specific area that, I mean?
Yeah, with methamphetamine specifically, it permeates every crime.
Every crime, yeah.
Particularly, I mean, from theft to, you see more violence with methamphetamine, but it really does permeate everything. Coroner in nineteen ninety-eight, the Pennington County combined the Office of Sheriff and Coroner, which is allowed by statute, and so it's been a good model. More and more counties are starting to move that way, where the sheriff is also the coroner. We're working twenty-four-seven anyway and have staff out, so it's a logical connection to have them perform that role. And you see the numbers kind of go up and down, we do, it varies, eighteen, twenty percent. So seventeen to twenty-one percent's a range, but eighteen to twenty percent of those result in autopsies. Obviously, there's a cost to autopsy, so we don't autopsy everybody, but if we think there's, you know, investigative reasons or unanswered questions, of course, we'll do an autopsy, so we don't leave questions unanswered. You know, the drug possession arrests, again, I feel like I'm a broken record when it comes to drugs and methamphetamine. The news asked us a story about it again yesterday. About seventy percent of the arrests are methamphetamine, you can see sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, how it drives our numbers, and these are not just Pennington County, these are at the jail, these are countywide arrests, so the Police Department, Highway Patrol, Box Elder. In this graphic, Helene created for us, we do this every week or so, try and put it out, really just trying to continue to raise awareness. And this one's a couple weeks behind, but we're up about eight or nine percent over last year. And as I said yesterday on the news, we're on about a six- or seven-year run of record, fun record year, every year for six or seven in a row.
So pharmaceuticals, do you think maybe some people get away with it, and it's not more of an arrest thing because they show you a prescription? Do you see what I mean for like their addictions and things like that? I mean, you don't get arrested for it because, you know, not till later, till you're stealing it or doing something because, you know, they cut you off kind of thing? That maybe, some of that's, just because it's prescription, is it still under, you know, you know what I'm saying? Is it under the seventy-eight, or is it prescription, people are taking stuff they shouldn't? Instead of they're doing it because they're on a prescription?
Yeah, we investigate prescription fraud and prescription drug abuse, and DCI Division of Criminal Investigation has some people specifically assigned to that, but we cross over into that area as well. So you have some people that'll fill prescriptions and turn around and sell it on the street. Some people that'll steal prescriptions from, out of a house or a car, sell it on the street, or some people that steal it and just abuse it themselves. And we charge people in those circumstances, too, just like we do methamphetamine.
And that'd be under the seventy-eight?
Pardon?
On pharmaceutical, the seventy-eight on pharmaceuticals and law enforcement investigations?
It'd be included in that number, is that your?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Kevin?
Yes, sir.
What percentage of the twelve hundred and twenty arrests in two thousand and eighteen for methamphetamine were ingestion? As opposed to possession, you know?
Yeah, I don't have that number handy. It's a good question, I don't know if we break it out that way or not, I'd have to ask State's Attorney's Office how it was charged. The question is, you know, internal possession, often times referred to as ingestion, so we stopped somebody, they've snorted, injected their methamphetamine, had no other methamphetamine on them, the only way they're charged is the internal possession of their methamphetamine in their body. Or the few states that, you know, allows that to be charged like that. It'll be part of the discussion with the Legislative Summer Study that Commissioner Drews is sitting on, I'm sitting on. There's a Legislative Summer Study looking at the controlled substance laws, and I think that'll be talked about during that process, what the outcome will be, you know, I'm not sure. Then it gets a little misleading with the ingestion charges is, sometimes people plead to ingestion, but there might have been three or four other charges that were dismissed, that's the one they happened to plead to. So sometimes that data can be a little skewed or misleading, because that's what they happened to plead to, but everything else was dismissed. So you've got to factor that in as well.
Okay, thank you.
Nevertheless, we've continued to raise awareness, how to report a crime, how to get help, and just keep, you know, using our megaphone to raise awareness about the issue. Transports, our Transport Division is extremely busy. The local trips is on top, that's people to the hospital, people to court, whatever. And the bottom line is our bus that goes across the state twice a week. Leaves on Tuesday, comes back Wednesday, leaves Thursday, comes back Friday. You're familiar with that, and our new bus is coming in July that you all approved the purchase of. We move almost seventeen thousand people a year, yeah.
How many counties, we also transferred other counties, they pay us to do that, how many other counties do we work with?
Yeah, we work with the Justice Marshal Service, the State Department Corrections. Off the top of my head, I don't know, another ten or twelve, fifteen counties, you know.
Because I see your, when you look at your budget, that that went up, and that's because also that you're, you're collecting more counties that, it costs them a lot of time and money to do that when we're already headed that way, I remember from, you know, JSC.
Yeah, we had Casey Peterson do that pro forma, and that was one of them they looked at. Basically, what they said with that transportation system was, we're getting ours done for free, and everybody else is getting theirs for about half, a third to half the cost. So it's truly a win-win. Twenty-four-seven program, again, a good program, been around for many, many years. You're starting to see more of a shift from the PBTs, portable breath test, to a lot more UAs. Obviously, with the UA, they can screen for drugs when a PBT does not, it's just alcohol. So you're seeing more utilization. You know, the beauty of this program is it's a hundred percent offender pay, so there's no tax support included in it. And it's a good program. Care Campus, of course, up and running since September of last year. Almost sixteen thousand admissions to the safe beds, detox, crisis care. Put that in perspective, over the course of the year, the jail has, you know, roughly about thirteen thousand bookings. So we're going to far exceed that, and this does not include our sixty-four treatment beds. They're not online till, you know, this October, November first, whatever that is, and that'll add even more admissions. Now, the treatment beds don't churn like the detox and State Solutions bed, you come to a treatment bed, you're there for a longer period of time. By all accounts, we feel like it's been a successful program.
So Kevin, those four thousand eight hundred and nine would have went to the Police Department, right? And been booked through there instead of coming through the Care Campus?
Some of these, and I'll show you a slide on what we call jail diversion.
Okay, thank you.
These are just sources that, you know, where they're coming. Self-referral's been very high, higher than we expected, so that's a good thing, people are finding us, finding a way there without law enforcement having to intervene. Again, second floor, you know, the purple on the left, that'll be, I'm sorry, on the right, the residential treatment, the, that'll be completed in October, thirty-two male, thirty-two female. We were the benefactors of the bad weather, everybody else couldn't work outside this spring, so they had a lot of people working inside and accelerated our timeline on completion, so we benefited from that. And that was thanks to generous donations from an individual here in town that made that happen, so. And we did get good news from the state, we submitted a budget to them, about two point two million for detox and the treatment programs, and they're funding all of that, and then they've talked about giving us some additional money for meth treatment, so the state has stepped up with treatment dollars and recognized the value of the facility. Department of Social Services, folks from Sioux Falls who oversee the statewide program, came up and toured this. We've had other groups from Sioux Falls tour it, and it's always nice to hear that when we're way ahead of Sioux Falls on programs like this, and they've been very complimentary of what we've implemented in our community, so it's a, it's a win for us in terms of our community. The MacArthur, you know, we've been talking about that for three years, just a quick overview, and we have four. And we have four primary strategies with fourteen subcategories under that. And of course, that ties into the Safe Solutions and the Care Campus and the jail diversion numbers. One number, I guess I thought I had it in here, it was in my other one I gave earlier. Barry and I did a presentation at one, but jail diversions from the care campus. To date, seven hundred and eighty-nine people have gone to care campus instead of going to the jail. And we often times hear the term jail diversion, I prefer to talk about system diversion. Because it's saving public defender time, state's attorney time, court time, you know, law enforcement time. And Barry put together actual dollar amounts to that diversion, what it's saving. Because these low-level offenders, they just churn through the system, they burn lots of resources. And I'll bring that data forward at some point here, but it's a significant savings in terms of system diversion by not putting them through the jail. And again, that's part of our MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge initiative.
That'd be nice for something, doing an update, Kevin, to, at a commission meeting on some of those numbers. And so the whole public can listen, you know, how that facility's doing and just an update on that facility. And again, taxpayer dollars and how it's being spent in the right way and how that makes a difference for, basically, their community.
And we can work with you as a chair or with Holly, and if you want to do it closer to the one-year anniversary, if you want it sooner than that, we'll, glad to provide it whenever, so.
Whenever you're ready, Kevin, I think is, is best because you'll have the numbers and, and you'll know best when to bring that forward to us, Kev, you and Barry.
Okay.
So.
We'll coordinate with Holly on that. Jail average daily population, of course, average daily population, average length of stay is like a hotel occupancy, that's what drives your, your numbers. You know, we spiked up in seventeen, eighteen settled down, nineteen, we're somewhere between those two numbers. Year to date, we're at six twenty-two. We're finally starting to see some of the impact of the care campus kicking in. We've charted our low-level offenses and they're starting to drop off in the jails, so we're continuing to see impact. Of course, at the jail, we try and make room for our paying customers like the marshals in other counties and try and find something to do, else to do with our non-paying customers, as long as they're not violent and we have other alternatives. And just some jail by the numbers, and I won't go through all of them again, about thirteen thousand bookings, you can see the length of stay, male, female, seventy, thirty, sixty-nine, thirty-one. It varies a little bit from year to year. That number's actually crept up with a higher representation of females the last two, three years.
Tell us about the six thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine video court appearance. I know they quit that for a while and then they implemented again, and the reasoning and, and how much that saves for time and energy for your department and the court system?
Yeah, and these, it saves us from taking people from out of the jail over to the courthouse, so we can do it electronically instead of, you know, shackling everybody up and taking them over to a courtroom. And especially for morning court, the, the initial appearances.
And those are, I'm sorry, and those appearances, when you, when you have a video court appearance, what kind of court case is that? Basically, it's not people that did something violent, it's basically something that can be pretty much over video quick, and what kind of offenses are those?
The video appearance could be for, literally for anything. It could be for any initial appearance or for some other status hearing if you wanted to use it for that. So you could use it almost in lieu of anything, not exclusively, but you could use it in lieu of any hearing in the courtroom if you had to. And meals, and we're updating the, you know, the laundry and kitchen, the seven hundred and five thousand meals, that's just the jail, doesn't include care campus and J S C. So we're, we're probably somewhere close to eight hundred thousand meals a year, and.
Lloyd, did you have a question or?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was just going to point out when I was looking at your booking numbers, that's like one in seven for a population. I was counting the room, there'd be two out of, two people out of the people in this room would have been booked for last year.
Wasn't me.
Was me.
I just found that interesting, thanks for those numbers.
Kevin, I, I might just have a question if you go back to that.
Yep.
Just out of curiosity, if you used Minnehaha County as a, an example, would that, would that model be anywhere similar to what Pennington County does?
In terms of population?
Or like the video, some of the techniques that you're applying and?
I mean, they use video court and stuff in terms of volume, of course, they're just adding on to their facility and opening up more beds, just. Robert, Brian, do you know their total bookings at Minnehaha County? They're slightly higher if I remember right, but. Brian said their, their bookings are slightly higher, our average daily population's been a little bit higher. But again, they're, they just had a jail expansion, so that'll probably leapfrog us again. And their daily rate is ninety-seven, our daily rate's eighty-five.
I'll keep that in mind.
Yeah.
I'm going to go, Lloyd, will you take, something in my eye, sorry. You're okay, you can keep going, sir.
The jail garden, something been doing for the last four or five years now. Again, we use it to support cornerstone, the Wavy Domestic Violence Shelter, we use it with our food vendor at the jail, and then we do some goodwill for the community, giving pumpkins away in the fall and other vegetables that are still left in the garden. And it's been very popular, the inmates and the trustees, and our community work program people will be working out there. It's in Box Elder right across from City Hall. J S C, the Juvenile Services Center, just some data about average length of stay, the population, of course. The federal and Pennington County are the big drivers, you know, compact, it's a seven-county compact. Some of the smaller numbers, then we'll house for other counties on occasion. And if you got questions, ask always, I'll just kind of blow through some of these because a lot of this was in the annual report. But the monitoring, home detention, again, more and more people out on bracelets as opposed to inside the walls for incarceration. And just a comment on the average length of stay going up, that's a reflection of hardcore kids in the facility. Kids that don't need to be there, there's alternatives for, find something else to do with them. The ones that are there, frankly, are hardcore and probably need to be there. Lutheran Social Services partners with us, they run what we call the Arise Center. It's what's called a shelter care licensed under Department of Social Services, and it's been a good partnership. We've been doing that for a number of years as well, and it, we partner with them on some of the addiction services that'll be moving to the care campus that are currently on McCross Street.
When we did the tour of the jail, didn't you say the nightly rate for that was in the four hundred dollars?
For juveniles, for the federal juveniles, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-five a night for federal juveniles, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year.
And how much is it for our jail?
Jail's eighty-five.
Eighty-five.
And then for the compact counties, and look at these, two sixty? Two sixty for the compact counties, two ninety for the non-compact counties.
And that's for J S C?
Correct, yes. Volunteers, we use a lot of volunteers, I've seen the fire people up here. We work with them a lot on searches to rescues, to fires, to crashes. They're excellent to work with. Been very pleased and are working in a relationship with the Volunteer Fire Service. You can see we use volunteers throughout the sheriff's office and really couldn't do the things we do without volunteers. So we're, we're thankful and we're fortunate to have the number of people who do the volunteer in our community to support what we do. Stat summary, didn't change in two thousand and twenty, although you recently gave us some, in terms of the two thousand and twenty request, you just gave us ten F T Es for the care campus that are funded out of those treatment dollars. And of course, the school resource officers you added in over the last couple of years were built into the nineteen budget, but no additional requests in two thousand and twenty.
How about for the second floor?
What's that?
That, when you finished the second floor, did you add in those?
That were the ten F T Es?
That was those ten that we, you recently awarded.
But, but no others when it's finished at this time for two thousand and twenty?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Those would be reflected in the nineteen number, so nothing requested in twenty.
Twenty twenty, okay.
Okay, so here, here's my sheet I like to talk about. The, so each year, we try and be frugal. So in two thousand and sixteen, we, this was just tax support only. We asked for a thirteen thousand, three hundred dollar increase in tax support. We're a unique budget, forty-five, forty-six percent of our budget is funded by outside revenues. We brought a decrease in seventeen, a decrease in eighteen, brought a decrease in nineteen, and then you took another three hundred and sixty-eight thousand in nineteen. And so collectively, over the last, let's see, sixteen, four or five years, four years, we've turned, we've had about a one million dollar decrease in tax support to our budget. And the reason I illustrate that point is, and that's before you add salary policy back in, and we brought these cuts on the front side, trying to be frugal and take advantage of the other revenues we have. But over the last four years, by cutting a million dollars of tax support out, we're to the point where, you know, I'm going to whine a little bit, and you'll see we asked for a slight increase this year. Again, absent salary policy, set that aside. So this year, operationally or budget-wide, budget-wide, we asked for about a three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar increase in tax support. Some things we have no control over, the workers' comp, group insurance, you know, some of those we don't have any control over. And you can see itemized some of the others and just kind of a catch-all miscellaneous, and it's go through all the line items and show you. One thing I do want to say, last Friday, we signed a new contract with the United States Marshal Service, and we did a little bit better than we had anticipated. And so we think we can bring, I talked, mentioned this to Cindy, another hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand additional revenue to the table to help decrease that three sixty-one by that number. So say it's two hundred thousand, it'd be a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar increase. And I've mentioned that to Cindy, and I'll get her a firm number because I know you'll want that for your calculations. So we're, we're always looking at our revenues, looking at our unspent budgets. And of course, this is a significant number. Each year, we turn back lots of money, largely from our over-collected, sometimes from underspent budgets. And my philosophy has been, I'd rather come at the end of the year and give you a million, a million dollars back, rather than show up at the end of the year and say, I need a million dollars, and put the county in a bind. You still get to spend the money, you just got to wait a year to spend it, and it still comes back to the county. This year, I mean, I put a number in there, one point two million, might even be a little stronger, net of revenues are very strong. Yet the danger is, with one kid at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, if I lose five kids out there, that's a pretty significant amount of money and revenue to lose. So we've always tried to protect the county on, on the high side, and, you know, that way we can turn money back at the end of the year. And things that you can use it next year towards the surplus or, you know, put it towards reserves, wherever you choose to put it. But almost seven point three million dollars over the last five years, so we work hard at trying to keep our expenses down and generate revenue for the county. And expenditure comparisons, you have those, and I'll go through these real quick. The, the revenues, again, forty-five, forty-six percent of our budget is outside revenues. This is an advantage we have with the way we're structured with the jail, J S C and our bus system, you know, fees for servants papers, collecting money for pistol permits, all those things that generate revenues, grants, that generate revenue for the sheriff's office. And the tax support needed, this is really the, you know, the bottom line, and this includes the, you know, salary policy as proposed at two point four with the two steps. So obviously, any modification of that has an impact on this, and we'll be bringing some dollars to make a difference to the bottom line, and there you go.
So Kevin, you bring, is that on this page, two thousand and twenty, you bring how many millions, seventeen? Is that that next page, seventeen million, six, five, five, and then we subs, not subs, guys, but?
Seventeen, six, five, five, is that the one?
Yeah, there you go, okay, you're on the same page. That's what you bring in for revenues, right?
Correct.
And then the rest is tax-supported, basically general fund?
Yeah, could be, yeah, it should be tax-supported.
Thirty, where was it, thirty, what'd you have on there, thirty-seven?
Thirty-eight, whatever it was.
Thirty-seven, so we, we do twenty, and you do almost half. Thank you. Any questions for?
I did have a question, but it looks like you answered it. Drug seizure, apparently we do have auctions or something like that, that we, we, when we do a drug seizure, we seize property, and then what do we do to, with that property?
Yep, there, there's two ways we get drug seizure dollars. One is through a state process. In South Dakota, all the forfeitures are done by the Attorney General's Office, and there's, by the legislature, there's a drug control fund created. And that pays for drug testing, purchase of drug evidence, and if there's leftover money, then law enforcement can apply to that and receive equipment. There's canines, cameras, whatever. The other route is if there's a federal case that's prosecuted and there's a, we participated in it, and there's a seizure, a civil seizure involved, we can ask for a percent of the proceeds based on our involvement in the investigation. And those are kind of hit and miss, we, they kind of come long and frequently.
Okay, thank you.
Obviously, there's a lot to digest, Kevin, but if you, for items like supplies, if you have to project into the future, do you, is there a certain C P I that you try to use?
In terms of just our fuel and everything?
Budget to one year in the future, just the cost of living?
We don't attach a fixed number. Generally, we go through our line items, we'll see, first thing we try and do is see if we can reduce something to offset something we, we know is going to increase. You know, fuel is kind of a wild card for us, and that's a, that's a big number. And if the, it's a little bit of a, a guess at times, but we look at historical averages and then look at our utilization. And then sometimes we'll attach an inflation factor to that. For example, we, we'll burn about a hundred thousand gallons of gasoline, and we projected it at two dollars and eighty-seven cents. Well, something happens in the world, it spikes out to three fifty, then we got to try and eat that somewhere else, so it's lower, then we have salvage in that category. We burn twelve thousand five hundred gallons of diesel fuel and budget that at three sixty, but we don't have a cross-the-board cost of living we attach. Sometimes, like we have contracts, our federal contracts for the jail, the juveniles, our bus transportation contract, and we have those set, fixed cost in there. And like, we just did an increase on the bus, we increased it by three or four cents, and that'll be set for three or four years. We try and do a three or four or five-year set on those when we ask for an increase, so we aren't going back to the other, our partners in other counties every year asking for an increase. It allows them to, you know, budget more consistently.
Right. Sheriff, are the Dodge vehicles that we're using for patrol units, are they the, have the type of motor in them that shuts down while you're at a stoplight and that kind of stuff?
No, they don't.
They don't?
我没 verified that, I don't think so. Because all the, all of ours are the police packages, so, yeah, they're configured different, both with all the wiring and, of course, the motor itself.
Okay, because I know the Hemi, at some point in time, Dodge started making them with, where they, they shut off, and then instantly they're back on again when you hit the gas.
Yep. Of course, our challenge too is, we have a lot of idle time. We might sit at a crash scene for eight, ten hours, we might sit at a crime scene for twelve, fifteen hours.
Right.
In that kind of scenario, wouldn't be very conducive to it, I don't know how that would work, to be honest with you.
Well, they cycle, I mean, like, I have a Dodge truck and it'll, it'll, like, if I'm out pheasant hunting and waiting around or a deer hunting or something like that, it'll, it'll shut off. And then about every, I don't know, ten to fifteen minutes, it'll run for about forty-five seconds, and then it'll shut off again. And I guess to keep the engine temperature up, I don't know why it does it, but it does, and it works great, but saves a lot of gas.
And, and we have a, we have a pretty significant load on them, on them too, with the radios, the computers in them, the lights. We have probably a different load on the engine than a personal vehicle, but it's a good question.
You're drawing on it constantly.
Yeah.
With your equip, with your electronic equipment, I didn't think about that.
Just a question, so, and maybe, maybe it's more for Holly, so you have four hundred and twenty-one employees?
Correct.
Is that what that said? And then Holly, we, how many do we have in Pennington County, we have, with the sheriff is eight hundred?
Yeah, that includes his number.
And how many H R people do you have, Sheriff?
Two.
Two, so we both have two, okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Other questions?
You're getting thorough and thorough every year.
You go.
I, it's funny, every year I learn something more on, on everybody's budget, so it's good because this is a complicated budget. And then once you start getting it down, it takes you three or four years and even more than that at this point, but you just keep learning more and more, and. But you just keep learning more and more, and it's good.
On the care campus, Kevin, can you go to that page? I was just glancing at this, I haven't had a chance to go over it real thorough, but on repairs and maintenance.
Are you in, are you in the line item on the book, or are you on the?
Yeah, line item, detox care campus.
Okay, I don't have that in front of me, but go ahead.
So two thousand and twenties, hundred and eight, and then the previous year was eight thousand, so is that like a capital expense or?
Might have to show them that paper.
Can I just look at your page real quick?
Yeah.
This one right there. Oh, I was just wondering if that's gonna be?
Ron, where are you looking at?
Yeah, the care campus.
I'm sorry, where?
This, this page.
Like, where'd you get it at, in your book? In your book, where did you get it? Where?
Yeah.
Where in your book is it at? Like, in the back or in the front?
It's in the?
Back? Back here?
It's in there.
What's it under?
Each, you've got the jail, you've got the care campus. Dynamized expenses for each one of the?
Go, go behind the sheriff's presentation that you just went through.
Okay.
And start flipping through his individual budgets. It'll say detox in my handwriting, and then it's zero two six three care campus.
And what we've tried to do, I can answer Commissioner Ross' next question while you're looking it up.
Can you show me, Holly?
It shows a hundred thousand dollar increase.
I see what you're saying. You're the, never mind, you guys, it's before his presentation.
Right.
Before his?
Lot of information.
Actually, when, I actually circled some of this stuff.
So it shows a hundred thousand increase for repairs and maintenance. What we've tried to do with the jail, with the juvenile center, with the care campus, is build those costs in. Because what happens is, we take our costs, like with our federal contracts, for example, they take all your costs, put it into a big complicated formula to include, like, indirect costs with auditor and stuff, and through that to calculate out your daily rate. Well, the state does the same thing when it comes to treatment services. So you wanna capture all your costs in there, so a hundred percent of your costs are factored in. That way, when they figure your rate, you can make an argument for, you know, the rate that's appropriate to actually cover your cost. Otherwise, we don't include repairs and maintenance. The county eats that cost.
Kevin, can you tell us how much we're splitting with the city for detox?
Historically, it's been a fifty-fifty split this year. Hang on a second. Increase there slightly, seven hundred and fifty, some thousand for them, seven hundred thousand for us. And, yeah, they've been good partners, but the bulk will work as a city, so it'd be nice to shift that cost slightly more if we could down the road.
And then I did had circled, it's funny, I did go through these pages and couldn't remember all the pages where, I just saw it a minute ago too, it was fifty-three percent decrease in capital A's for JSC, is that right? Or did I just see that at? I read it before too, so when I went through these papers. Do you know what I'm talking about, Joe? Okay. No. Let me see if I can find it again.
What are you talking about?
Negative fifty, JSC, capital A, subtotal negative fifty-three eight-five percent. You wanna see this?
Which one should I look at?
Equipment, vehicles.
Alternatives, are you in the JSC budget?
JSC. Maybe it's equipment and vehicles, seventeen-five, twenty-twenty. Wanna see it, Kevin?
Alternative's budget.
Security detention's where she at?
Might not be, it's not that much, but it's just where the percentage, when I, when I look at stuff, it's where the higher or lower percentages are not average of it there.
Yeah, we took some of the vehicle expense out of there.
Okay, thank you.
It's a small number, so it shows a high percent decrease, it's like a percentages, but we took a vehicle cost out of there. So we're obviously not replacing a vehicle that year. Years we replace a vehicle, sometimes you'll see a spike, and then if there's not, you'll see a decrease some years.
And rentals, you've decreased that from forty-six to, or you've increased it, twenty-five thousand. Supplies you've added, no decreased, thirteen.
Yeah, a big piece of that one was the shop rent. You remember we moved to the old Ziggy's building down on La Crosse Street? And then you can see on the one slide, some of our costs.
I forgot, actually.
Were for the shop.
You're right, and that's why on some of your other stuff that I circled, now that you're saying that, on this, from the book of this?
If you look at rentals, that's?
That's, that's why the, yeah.
As for the shop, we increased, we're increasing some space at the drug task force, the Unet, and all those things have a, of course, impact. We try and absorb as much as we can, twenty-four seven, you know, they, they have their own funding source. But in terms of tax support, the shop and then the drug task force are the two drivers behind that increase you see in here.
So FTEs overall of the jail, are you adding any, or you guys stay about the same at four hundred and twenty-one? Because you did add, remember you said ten this year for second floor? Anything else besides the four twenty-one that we're adding? And how many of those are granted? Are those just without granted FTEs?
Yep, of the, when you say grant, to me, in terms of care campus, the only grant would be the MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge bodies, and?
So even with care campus, are yours, do you, do you have any other granted people, Kevin, that are? Besides care campus, or are you just, because you have a lot of different grants going on for different areas that are trying to help in diversion and just with jail population? The four twenty-one is just paid FTEs?
Yeah, so to answer your question first about the MacArthur, be all these, right? Which is the, you know, the four detox, just care campus, four detox texts, and two Health and Human Services caseworkers, to the, what's that? Oh, one EMT. And then into the larger question about other grants that we participate in, yes, we're involved in, oh, one, three, four. You should have a sheet with all of our grant breakdown, but one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, yeah, ten total grants. And there's, you know, FTEs scattered, you know, throughout those. Some are cost offset current FTEs we have, and they give us a vehicle, overtime, et cetera. Some are funding new FTEs out of that four twenty-one, so out of the four twenty-one, a percent of those are grant-funded.
Any other questions?
I don't know, maybe just one more. Can you go that last page, Kevin, in your presentation, expenditures comparison? That's probably a little hard to see, but under the, again, under the, under the care campus, would it be safe to assume that next year, that this year, it looks like the, oops, change is twenty-four point nine percent?
Are you looking at this one?
Go back to that one.
Yeah, that very, very less, yeah.
Okay, this one, Kev, tax support needed, is that what you're looking at, or a different one?
Expenditures comparison, I think it's.
I'm sorry.
Just, yeah, that.
That one.
Yeah, under the care campus, my question would be that this year, it looks like a twenty-four point nine percent increase, and next year would probably be safe to assume, because it's still trying to get up and be stabilized, so next year, that twenty-four point nine would probably be a lower percentage.
Yeah, all of it should be close to zero. I mean, because you remember, we're going from La Crosse Street with, you know, a max of twenty-eight beds, which now we've artificially kept low, because we're moving, you know, twelve to fourteen beds. And we're going to sixty-four beds on the treatment side, and then the safe beds and detox beds will increase significantly. So this is a year you see that spike, then it should have a lot.
That's what I, just thought I'd double check.
Yep, that's correct.
Thanks.
Anything else, yours? Kevin, anything else to share?
Nope, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty.
Wanna know which two got booked?
Which two out of this room?
Let's see, I'm gonna guess Joe and Kara. So we're in, at this point, we can ask questions and stuff. I think we have lots of food for that today.
There's more food?
There is. Any other things for tomorrow, maybe, that you need to have Cindy, that you have any questions for Cindy, since she's here?
Not a fan.
Any thanks for, thank you for everything you're doing for us and looking this up.
Tomorrow's Friday, and we're looking at the afternoon of going over what we, we, some numbers we'd like to see done or something along those lines, am I correct?
Basically, Holly, kinda lined out, when we do kind of a review after this, can you kinda line out for new commissioners and for some of us that have done this before? And so Cindy knows and the staff, what on Friday would be the most beneficial for us to ask? Basically, so this board is, we're all on the same page of where we're going on Friday. So maybe you know some things. We're gonna review, Holly, if I'm correct, you'll review all the questions that we asked, and so the staff is contacted, Holly has a sheet, if I'm correct, Lloyd, you've done this before, of everything we've asked, and if there's anything we missed that we wanna ask of the staff, so we can get that information, not that day, we're not gonna have it on Friday, but just to make sure we're not missing anything that you'd like to know that you have reviewed in the last few days, if I'm correct, Ms. Holly?
Yes.
Stop me if I'm wrong.
I have a list of all the things that you guys are talking about, that you'll need to either make motions on or make some decisions on, and I'll work with Cindy this afternoon, fingers crossed, if she's not busy, to get all that lined out for you for tomorrow.
Okay, so those aren't gonna be answers, those are just gonna be?
Well, there are things that you need to make some decisions on, so we can, so Cindy can go back. Give you some more accurate, tighter numbers.
Yeah.
Well, and Cindy, we're gonna need some help on some of that of, you already know, what are those numbers at? And she's not gonna be able to figure it on the spot, five FTEs, three this, and two that. She kinda wants to know, with everything we want, she's gonna have to figure out that number, and then tell us what that fifteen percent for, if that's where we're going, for reserves, that kind of thing. And then this board maybe has suggestions or ideas of, with Cindy, of how we get there. But that's not gonna happen by tomorrow, but at least we'll kinda get some information about.
I just, the only thing I wanted to do is, I think you just mentioned it, Deb, is for us tonight to think about, I think, number one, the reserve, where, where we wanna, where each one of us think, so we can have that discussion tomorrow, because I think that's our starting point.
Yes, sir.
With that. And then we'll have the discussion. You know, I know one of mine's, the spreadsheet for the employees, new hires, that type of thing. But, you know, I just, I think some things we can stop and have run through our minds tonight for tomorrow.
Yep.
Because I understand it's gonna take Cindy some time to put some numbers away, because I think we whittle away down what we want, which is a couple of things that I think we can work.
And some of that, I liked when Julie suggested some stuff, Cindy, that made sense to us when we were going in a direction that you're like, you guys, this is what's gonna happen if you do that. If you're seeing that, Cindy, I would hope you would speak out and say, guys, or you already have, if we're wrong where we're going sometimes, or how we think some of those revenues are, are made or not made, you can refresh us at any time, because that keeps us on target, is that a good way to put it? So any ideas and suggestions you have to get where that goal is, or where that needs to be, that you think is gonna make a difference for this budget, I would hope that you would feel comfortable saying that with us. We know, but Julie, that's what I did, one thing I did love about her, she just set it up straight. So it's a good thing, because those numbers gotta match, and, and you gotta take care of those numbers to make sure they do on those shortfalls or any of those expenditures that we're not keeping track of right, so. Any questions or anything from Miss Cindy, last thoughts before tomorrow? Okay, if not, motion to recess.
I move.
Motion by Deb and second one, the crew, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.